Recording in progress.
Good evening. We're calling the Groton Town Council Committee of the Whole on Tuesday, November 26, 2024, to order. Roll call, we have all present except for it seems like Councillor Pacino and Councillor Merritt, and we have Councillor Bordalyn online. Calendar and Communications. Councillor Bordalyn?
Thank you. Just want to wish everyone that's celebrating great, so happy Thanksgiving, it's Thursday, and hopefully everyone gets to enjoy family time. Other Communications, definitely received a lot of people reaching out, asking about all of the oil-changing places as far as up and down Route 12, car washing, car part stores, you know, asking is that the only thing we attract in Groton? And I basically referred them to the economic development and, you know, just said that that's not something that, you know, I'm definitely not approving, or it doesn't come to us, but there's definitely a big concern that are we becoming the car wash capital of the world and not the submarine? Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Rusk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So kind of tagging off what Councillor Bordalyn said, I had reached out to Town Manager Burt a week or so ago and asked him for an update on developments in the town as well as how planning and zoning interse- or interfere- intersects with that and how all those regulations work together. So I want to say thank you to the Town Manager as well as to Director Reiner and anybody else on staff who came out with a very informative narrative that has been put out on Facebook. I shared it on the Town of Groton website as well as my political Facebook page, or I'm sorry, the Town of Groton Forum. And so there's a lot of questions still on there, but I think it was extremely informative, so I just want to say thank you to everybody who is involved in that. And if you haven't had a chance to read it yet, it is on the Town of Groton Facebook page, it is on the Groton CT Forum. Town Manager, is it anywhere on, on the town website?
It's not yet, but I'll put it on there.
Okay, thank you.
And I did send it to all councillors and RTM members.
Thank you so much. A couple quick announcements, SubVets is having a Thanksgiving dinner at 50 School Street from 12 to 5:00 p.m. That is open for all sailors, their families, they feed all first responders, duty sections, standards, and veterans. If you are interested in volunteering, they are looking for volunteers, and if you are interested in bringing pies and desserts, they will accept those through the morning of Thanksgiving. The Public Safety Committee meeting on November 19th was canceled. I did attend the Personnel and Appointments Committee. There's a lot of things coming up in town, so keep an eye out. But December 7th, GASP open houses from 11:00 to 2:00 for Chris World Christmas is 11:00 to 2:00. Stef A. Cruiser is December 8th, the City Municipal Building, and there is a Holiday Festival at the City Municipal Building on December 5th as well. I want to say thank you to the Town of Groton Human Services for all of the Thanksgiving baskets that they handed out. I know there's a lot of need this year, and I know they handed out quite a few baskets. I know Councillor Parker was there, I had a work, a work-related thing that day, so I couldn't be there, but thank you to them. With Groton Human Services, if you are in need of Christmas gifts, please give them a call, I know they are currently registering families, so that is available, as well as Tommy Toys in the region. And one more thing for the Town Manager, I'd asked about it, there had been a lot of concerns regarding the intersection of 117 and 184. I know there was another accident there this recently, so I'm wondering if we have heard anything from the state?
We have not heard anything back, but things aren't usually that quick, so, yeah. I'll try, I'll, I'll have the Public Works Director to reach out to them.
Awesome, thank you, and just happy Thanksgiving to everybody in the town.
And the information is now posted online, on our website.
Thank you so much.
Councillor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Continuing with the development email that we got, which I have right here, I'm just going to read, because it just woke me up, I'm going to read this one paragraph, because I was reading it today, it answers this question about gas stations. Groton has recently seen an influx of gas stations, car washes, auto parts stores, and oil change facilities. The Town of Groton market analysis also indicates the need for some of these uses based on market needs. Most of these are on Route 1 Downtown Corridor. While it may seem that they have better uses suited for Route 12 or Route 184, it should be noted that gas stations are not allowed in those areas as they fall within the Water Resource Protection District. So, I didn't know that. Thank you, Town Manager Burt, for letting us know that that's a great reason why they are where they are. Okay, three things that did, Personnel Appointments with Councillor Rusk and Councillor Gajewski. I attended, along with Councillor Merritt, the Bluff Point Restoration Study, which is very interesting over at Fort Trumbull, just went through what they're doing and what global warming and rising sea levels is doing to Bluff Point, and also attended on Friday with Councillor Parker, Gajewski, and Rusk, the United Way Food Bank, and we fed 338 families this time, so I don't know if that's a record, but it's a lot, it's a lot of, lot of need, so, thank you to everybody, it was, it's great to participate, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McBride?
Thank you. Also want to thank Town Manager Burt and what Councillor Rusk and Councillor Jones were speaking about, it's very detailed, encourage everyone to review that, it was very helpful for me to get a better understanding of everything that's happening with regards to economic development. Also wanted to let everyone know that Town Manager Burt has sent us some information, there's an email regarding the Connecticut Department of Transportation will be hosting a virtual public informational meeting concerning the Groton Long Point Bridge on Tuesday, December 3rd at 7:00 p.m. for anyone that's interested in learning more about that project. Also want to wish the Fitch football team best of luck in their Thanksgiving football game coming up, and would also like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Gajewski?
Nothing that hasn't been already stated, so I'm not going to repeat it for everyone, just, just to know, have a wonderful holiday, and do not drink and drive this holiday season. I think one tragedy was enough in our community this year, or ever. So, have a safe holiday.
Thank you. Councillor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Picking backing off of Councillor Rusk, there is the Tommy Toy Fun Drive that's going to be held December 7th from 12:00 to 6:00 at Outer Lights. The town is also putting on a season of celebration on December 7th from, no, am I right? December 7th, parking's at Grace Church?
Grace Baptist Church.
Grace Baptist Church, at the community center, so if everyone come out and celebrate, what else do I have? I think that was it, and happy holidays, thank you.
Thank you. For me, I helped a resident who lives in Winding Hollow who had some questions about some street lighting, and I spoke to somebody at Groton Utilities after I had messaged the city mayor, and we figured out who owns what in the area, the polls, and that there was some issues there, and I got some answers to give to the citizen. Now I have some mayor announcements that I wanted to tell, so, if we could, maybe, I don't know if this goes with the same clock time, but letting the council know that the Board of Education had met on September 23rd, 2024, and, or at least that's what the minutes are from then. And they're, they had discussion and possible action regarding rescinding the June 6, 2024 request for additional funding for fiscal year 2024. A motion was made to rescind that, June 20, June 6, 2024, request of additional funding for fiscal year 2024. It was voted on and passed unanimously, so the Board of Ed has withdrawn their request from the council. Lieutenant Governor Bisiewicz will be in Groton and will, will be inviting Groton veterans for an award ceremony for their dedication and commitment to our nation. There will be the Korean War, a ceremony is scheduled for January 27, 2025, at 3:30 p.m. in the Auditorium at Fitch Senior High School. So Korean veterans and their families would like to attend, they are RSVP to Lisa Hilton, I believe she's sending out letters. This is followed by a Vietnam Veterans Ceremony at 5:30 by Lieutenant Governor Susan Bisiewicz, as she will be speaking, and she will be providing citations to veterans on both events, and all councillors are invited to attend. And a letter was sent out on November 18th to members who have been selected to join the Groton Heights Property Review Committee, and this committee will review proposals for redevelopment of the former Groton Heights Elementary. The membership for Groton Heights will be Councillor Parker, she will chair the committee, Councillor McBride, Jackie Massett from the RTM, Susan Dean Chimbrot from the RTM, Pantea Umaraz from the EDC, Jonathan Reiner, and Mr. John Burt from Town Staff. Also Pleasant Valley has been chosen as well and to review proposals for that property. The members include Councillor Gajewski, which will be the Chair of the Committee, Councillor Bordalyn, Robert Boers from the EDC, David Good from RTM, Emma Gibbs from the RTM, Jonathan Reiner, and Mr. John Burt, who are the staff representatives.
Point of information?
Yes?
How were we chosen, because I don't remember putting my name in for that one in particular, I'm just curious.
An email was sent out to all councillors, and I received responses from councillors, and I did receive one from you saying you were interested. You had additional questions, but you said you were interested.
Yeah, I never got my questions answered, so I don't know that I wanted to be on that particular one, I don't know how I got voluntold for it, so I'm just a little confused.
Mr. Burt did respond to your questions.
Um, I'm, yeah, I just-
Would you not like to be on that one? Because I can-
I mean, I just don't know, like, is there other ones that we can ask to be on? I just haven't really been told how the process is going to roll out, which is kind of, just says, I don't know, I'm just confused as all, but that can come under another agenda item or later if it's not convenient now, I'm just a little curious.
Okay, I just thought you would like to be on a committee, because you have asked-
Yeah, I would, I'm just confused as to why this particular one, how I was selected for this one, and, you know, it just, I, yeah, I'm just confused, it just seems very random.
The mayor selects the members of the committee, and I asked for volunteers.
But there'll be other properties, so if we don't want to be on these, can't we be on others, perhaps?
I don't know if there'll be other properties. Okay, moving on. The council is invited to the Winter Holiday Social on December 17th from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Nautilus Museum. RSVPs are requested, and I will send out an email, or Mr. Burt, if you would like to send out the email, RSVPs are to be sent to the person in the invite. Season of Celebration has been mentioned already. On Tuesday, December 3rd at 5:00 p.m., downtown Mystic Holiday Stroll in Landron Luminary. This Saturday at 6:00 p.m., the Lighted Holiday Boat Parade in the Mystic River in Tree Lighting. Also on Saturday at 2:00 p.m., the Santa Arrives by Tugboat in Downtown Mystic. The council has been invited by GASP to a Holiday Open House from 12:00 to 2:00 Saturday on December 7th. An invite was sent to the council, RSVPs are requested from, Mr. Burt had lifted the fire ban in Groton on November 22nd. The council has been invited to the Mystic Library Holiday Open House on December 3rd from 5:00 to 7:00. On Tuesday, December 3rd at 5:00 o'clock, there will be a Committee of Chairpersons meeting, it'll be a special meeting, this is an annual meeting. The agenda will include Groton 2035 Discussion, Climate Ready Groton in Action and Adaptation Plan, and Commission Updates. This is, I guess, Mr. Burt could probably tell me more, but from what I understand, this is my first time attending, but it's the Chair of all committees and boards will be invited.
All major committees, yeah, and then the mayor is the Chair of the overall committee.
The mayor and a guest is invited to attend a Mashentucket Pequot Tribal Council Holiday Reception on December 11th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. I sent an email out, please respond to me if you're interested, I'm allowed to bring one guest, and please respond by December 2nd. It's already been mentioned, the Town of Groton Development Update was shared with this council and is posted on the town's Facebook page, which is the Town of Groton. And I think that might be it for now. So have a happy Thanksgiving, everybody. So we will get back to our agenda.
Point of information?
Your point of information, your question?
Um, I, yeah, I'd like to decline that random proposal for the, the committee, since I'm not on any standing committees and I'm randomly chosen for an ad hoc and never offered to chair anything, I do not wish to just randomly be thrown on something, so thank you.
I don't think it was random, but I will take your decline of being on the-
My opinion is that it is random, so-
Councillor Bordalyn?
Thank you.
I'm, I will accept your declining of being on this committee, and I will replace you with Councillor Pacino.
Thank you. Keep the precedent.
I, I just don't even know what to say to that, so we'll be moving on to Approval of Minutes. Councillor Parker, would you like to take that?
Yes, I'd do that, thank you, Madam Mayor. I make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes of November 12, 2024, I so moved.
Seconded by Parker. Seconded by Jones. Does anybody have any updates to the minutes, or any issues? Seeing no hands, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Councillor Bordalyn, I deny, hear your vote.
I'm an aye.
Thank you. That'll be seven to zero to zero. Onto new business, we have the Community Oriented Policing Safer Outcomes Grant. That is on page seven of our packet. Councillor Gajewski, would you like to take that?
Of course, Madam Mayor. Item 2024-1021, Community Oriented Policing Cops Safer Outcomes Grant. Motion to recommend a resolution authorizing the Town Manager, John Burt, to execute all grant documents for the U.S. Department of Justice, COPS, safer outcomes grant to accept the funding in the amount of $193,270 and refer the matter to RTM per rule 6.5-3, so moved.
Seconded by Gajewski, seconded by Rusk. Good evening, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor. Chief LJ Fizaro from the Police Department, here to talk about the grant that we were awarded by the Department of Justice.
Okay. Want to give a synopsis?
Sure. So we did apply for this grant, as, as I'm sure the council is aware, there are grants that are sometimes annually given out by the United States government, the Department of Justice does this under the Community Oriented Policing Grants. Now, not every department is eligible for every grant, our department does monitor these from time to time, and this is a good, this is a good thing for us, it's just under $200,000 that the department has been awarded, should the council and RTM authorize our acceptance of this award. But it's really geared at safer outcomes, and what they're talking about that are some of the things that we've discussed in this room, and certainly in other forums around policing in the last couple of years, which is de-escalating situations, using crisis intervention training. We've been at the forefront of that for many years, but this will allow us to get the rest of our department that hasn't been trained in crisis intervention trained, there'll be recertification of those that have already done it. We're looking at a whole host of programs that will be funded by this project. Now the thing about grants is it's not used to supplant funds that the council and RTM appropriate for other reasons, it's supposed to be for above and beyond that, and that's exactly what this does. So we've, you know, we're going to be able to put people out at some, have them a trend training, reimburse their overtime for that training, gives a little bit of money for critical incidents, for callouts that our officers may go where there's crisis intervention at work. The crisis intervention training that we will be doing will, will help replace the overtime costs for these individuals. We're going to also incorporate a large reality-based training component to this. That's something we've been doing in the department the last couple of years, our Training Division has been utilizing their staff and bringing officers through reality-based training. We use shoot, don't shoot scenarios, we've also had interactions, we've used different locations in town where we've done some staged evolutions of training, where officers will arrive, they'll get dispatched, it'll be a mock scenario where they have to intervene, and there'll be proctors involved in that, we're going to, we're going to use some of the funding for that. We're going to get outside training, and then, as I said, I think I may have already mentioned this, but refresher training for those that have already been involved in CIT and de-escalation training. So it's a large amount of money for us to, to do this, we do have a plan for it, really am proud of the work that our Training Division did in, in putting together the package for this grant. I want to give a special acknowledgement to Officer Chris Banks, who's our Accreditation Manager, who played a key role in getting this, so it's, it's again, the sum of $193,000 that we are awarded, and really only a few departments in the state receive this award. So my hope, and my hope is that the council will, will also see the value in this and authorize the Town Manager to accept this grant on behalf of the department.
Councillor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chief Fizaro, and thank Officer Banks for his effort in putting this together. Most of you know, or some of you know, I've been doing the Citizens Police Academy over the last, it's a 10-week program, we're in week eight. Last week we got to experience a little of reality-based training with tasers, it's a scary thing if you don't know what you're doing.
It's even scarier when you're on the receiving end of a taser.
And so I just want to compliment you and congratulate you on this grant, and 100% support it, but also just highlight the amount of emphasis put on de-escalation and CIT training and all the different training, and how important it is to make our police department probably one of the best in Connecticut. I mean, it's really amazing to sort of be around these guys and to see what they do, and the emphasis that they do on efforts for safety, safety for the people they're dealing with, safety for themselves, and so I think anything more that we can do to kind of keep that going, I think credit to you for just giving it atmosphere where training is, is right at the top of your list of things that the officers go through, and it's very, very evident from the classes that I've been doing every single week. So I just say thank you, and thank you for the effort to put these together and keeping our officers safe and well-trained.
Well, thanks for saying that, and I'm sure they'll, those that are watching this or those that aren't watching, I'll certainly convey that to them, but I think it's important that you've experienced that, you kind of see what they're dealing with and how that they're, you know, training has evolved a lot since I've been in policing, you know, and certainly CIT and the stuff that this is going to fund is going to be instrumental for us to handle situations that, you know, our, you know, officers don't get invited to the best things in life, right? We get, we, officers get a front row seat to all the bad things in life, and they have to sometimes try and take that bad situation and resolve it and make it better. Sometimes there are no-win situations, but the techniques and procedures and tactics that are trained in CIT training and de-escalation do help us manage those a little bit better, you know, and the, and the goal of this grant is safer outcomes, and that's what we're looking for, safer for the people that we're dealing with, but safer for the officers as well, and, and you got to experience a little bit of that as part of the Citizens Police Academy, that sometimes officers have to go hands-on, sometimes we have to utilize the tools that we're trained with, but our goal is always to manage the situation and make it better rather than worse.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say thank you to Chief Fizaro and your Officer Banks and your team for getting this grant and enhancing, enhancing some community policing with the unfortunate events nationally in the early 2020s, there was a lot of distrust, and I appreciate the work that you're doing here on a local level to set an example nationally, so I thank you for that. My one question is, I see in the letter that it is from the Attorney General of the United States, with the change in the transition from one administration to the other, is there any possibility that this gets revoked at the last minute, or this has been allocated already?
No, I don't expect it will be, this is money that's already been appropriated, as far as I understand it. One of the reasons for me coming before you is there's a 45-day window for us to accept this grant from the date of award, and that was on November 14th, so we're, we're in that, that timeframe, so I- So we're, we're in that, that timeframe, so I kind of want to get this money in our coffers as soon as possible, so we can start utilizing it for this training.
Thank you, Chief, for that, and a 45-day window clears it up for me. Best of luck to you at the next steps, and I'll be in favor of it.
Thanks for the support.
Counsel McBride?
Thank you. Congratulations on this grant, thank you for everything you do in bringing some more dollars to the town. I just had a question, and it's really, I think you answered it, but I just want to make sure for those residents that are listening, because we do get questions when sometimes we receive grants, and additional questions that we receive are, are there any incremental costs involved with the grant, such as you got to backfill positions, do you have to travel there, you know, for cost for that? But I just want to make sure, you know, you indicated that this was going to be overtime, which is going to be paid, so we don't have to backfill positions, and I just want to make sure the residents are aware that any and all costs relating to the training or backfilling is all going to be covered by this grant, so there's no additional taxpayer, this is fully funded after this grant.
Sure, sure. Great question. Yes, that's the whole point of this, is to do things that we wouldn't ordinarily be able to fund, and that the town hasn't already funded. So the cost to backfill, the cost for any travel expenses, for any training classes, all that stuff is going to be paid for by this grant. We do have to provide a budget, we have to also provide feedback and reports to the federal government as to how this money was expended and where it went. So all those costs that, you know, the ancillary costs that one might think, hey, is the town going to be paying for that? That's all supposed to be, that's absorbed by this grant, and that's what that appropriation is for. And as I indicated before, sometimes there are eligibility requirements, you may be eligible for one grant and not another. We try and keep our eyes on those grants that fund those things that don't put an additional burden on the town, and that we are eligible for.
All right. Thank you for that explanation. All set.
Thank you. Counsel Rusk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's not much I can say that hasn't already been said, but I just wanted to say thank you always for getting, for going out and getting a grant. It takes a bit to do that, and for your continued focus on community policing and crisis intervention techniques. So just thank you to you and your whole team.
I appreciate that acknowledgement. We'll continue that focus as long as I'm in charge, we'll maintain the ability for our officers to go out there and do their job, and, you know, use these training points to do their job a little bit better. So thanks for saying that.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Will this be used for, because I know some training is desk training and some is physical training, like, will this be used for both, or?
There'll be some classroom training involved in this, yes. I mean, that's part of that, that, you know, when your CIT training isn't really hands-on training so much, that's really classroom stuff, so it'll be for delivery of classroom, but also some hands-on training. So it's a combination of all of the above. Some local, and some, by the way, that we're going to have to send people away for, but the good news is this grant will cover it.
Okay. Well, this is a substantial grant, and I am also proud of your training department, and thank you, and congratulations to you and your department for being awarded this grant.
Well, thank you, and if I could just make one comment, I really, we're fortunate, no credit to me, but through the folks that, you know, work in our training unit, they do an exceptional job. I think Counsel Jones got to see a little peek behind the curtain as to what they do. I'm really proud of their work. I would hold them up against any trainers that I've worked with in my entire 30-plus year career, they do an exceptional job.
No, that's great. Thank you so much. Counsel Bordalyn?
Thank you. Basically, it's been said multiple times already, congratulations, and definitely exciting to see grant opportunities that can enhance our community as a whole, as well as our local department. So it definitely, you know, is important to have these funds available to do that. So, you know, I did look at this online and saw the different places that were awarded in different years, and it's very interesting, it's, when you go online, you can see, you know, all the different years and the amounts that they have awarded, and, you know, we should be very lucky that we were a recipient, and, you know, keep looking for grants, I think it's a great opportunity. So thanks again.
Thank you.
Just ready to vote.
Yeah. Seeing no other hands, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Passes seven to zero to zero. Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, up next-
Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, you too. Thank you. All right, up next is AARP Livable Community Grant. This is on page nine. Counselor McBride, would you like to take that?
Certainly. Item 2024-1005, AARP Livable Community Grant. I'd like to make a motion to recommend a resolution authorizing the town manager or his designated to execute all grant documents and to accept the AARP Livable Communities Grant in the amount of $4,000.
Seconded, Parker. Moved by McBride, seconded by Parker. Good evening. Would you like to introduce yourselves and give a synopsis?
Sure. Good evening, Mark Berry, Director of Parks and Recreation. To my right is Tomy Stanley, who is Program Supervisor with Thrive. The reason that I asked her here was because she wrote the grant, and I wanted her to get the recognition for writing this grant. So we are here in front of the council tonight requesting that the council approve a $4,000 grant from AARP for livable communities. Our goal, the project goal is to put up a sail outside of the entrance to Thrive 55 on the left-hand side. We were approached by a number of patrons saying that there's a couple of benches out there, and it's uncomfortable for them, it gets really warm because it's surrounded by two sides of the building, and it gets, when they're sitting out there waiting for transportation, they said, you know, it would be nice if we could sit in the shade. And so we listened to what they said. When this grant opportunity became available, Tomy wrote the grant, and we received $4,000 towards the installation of the sail.
Great. Anybody have any comments, questions? Counsel Rusk?
I'll say it again, thank you for applying for a grant. I know that they are tedious at times, so big or small, thank you for saving the taxpayers $4,000, it really is important. So thank you.
You're welcome. Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Tomy, for doing it and listening to the, all the residents who have requested and need something like this. So is this in the right-left of the door, or all the way to the left of the building?
No, it's to the left of the front door. So there's the, whoops, there's the, I don't know what you'd call it, that extends out from the front of the building, and then there's like this little seating area where there's a couple of benches, and some, yeah, there's-
It's that area, yeah.
It's that area. It's the one, as you're facing the building with your back to the library, it's to the left side. And eventually, we'd like to do the right side also, but have grant money now to do the left side.
Okay. All right. Yeah, and that's the area where there are benches there, and people wait.
Yes.
Yeah, right outside that.
Yeah, there's actually, yeah, there's benches on both sides.
Yeah. Okay. Cool. All right, thank you. And when do you think this will be installed?
We would, it would be installed in the, in the spring. And we've already talked to Public Works, we'll take the sail down for the winter to help extend the life of the sail. There is a 12-year warranty on the sail, so we expect it to have a good, long life.
All right. Fantastic. Thank you.
Counsel Bordalyn?
Thank you. I think it's a great opportunity, I appreciate you guys seeking grants, it's definitely important. But the bigger issue and importance I see is that you're looking at the health and well-being of our most vulnerable community members, and, you know, not saying, you know, it's a lot of folks who have medical conditions and stuff, being out in the direct heat can severely impact them. And so looking at climate change as a real issue, it is vital that especially our most vulnerable have a safe place to sit and wait outside of the sun and the elements. Actually, it's interesting, I'm interested to see how the sale is going to go. You know, I have heard some different communities, not just in their senior centers, but throughout other communities, where they're actually building like traditional kind of bus stops and things with fans on the inside, you know, for children, for seniors, for all of that. So it is very important. So, you know, I think it's very important to have, and, you know, helps our community be able to participate, because folks, you know, think that winter is the only time where, you know, elderly struggle, but as we're, as we're having the climate be so much hotter, it is tough for some people on hotter days to even come out. So I'm very excited for this, and thank you, Tomy, and, you know, I appreciate your efforts, and listening to our, our community members is vital. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. Any other hand? All right. Well, I also thank you, although $4,000 may seem like a small amount, it will have a very big impact on the people, our seniors, and for visitors, so I think that's wonderful. And of course, I always love a grant, so thank you so much. And we will now take a vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstentions. Counsel Bordalyn, I didn't hear your vote.
I said aye.
Thank you. That's seven to zero to zero, and it passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving all.
Yes, you too. Thank you. All right, up next is a presentation, 2024-1019, Presentation of Community Tree Management Plan. This is on page 10 of our packet.
Hello.
Hello. Good evening. Would you like to introduce yourselves?
I'd love to. Hi, I'm Sarah Lilly, I'm with EOC and Environmental Group, I'm an urban forestry consultant. And I live in Milford, Connecticut, so I just traveled up the coast today to be with you all.
Wonderful. And we have you, Mr. Berry.
Yes, still Director Berry.
All right. Do you want to give a synopsis? I mean, are we going through a presentation?
Yes, there is, there is a slide, presentation.
Wonderful.
Yes. Just to give you a little bit of background, we contracted with EOC to do a street tree inventory and also develop a community tree management plan, which I believe was in your packet for this, for this meeting. So they, well, I don't want to take away Sarah's presentation, but they inventoried over 3,000 trees. We identified areas in the community where there's a lack of trees, we identified that there's a lack of diversity of trees. And I do, I just want to share with you that we've already taken action on some of these recommendations and some of the data that's been collected. We partnered with the Resiliency and Sustainability Manager, Megan, and we've written a grant, a challenge grant, for a regional heat mitigation program. So of the over 3,100 trees that were identified, 6,000, oh, sorry, 636 were located in priority areas identified by the EPA's Disadvantaged Community Map. And so we're, have submitted a grant to plant 150 trees within those, within those areas. I don't know if we've, we have not heard whether we're going to receive that grant money, but we're already taking action on the data that came from this street tree inventory and from the community tree management plan. We've also started removing some of the trees that were identified as high priority, meaning they needed to be removed, and we're also working on training the staff on proper pruning techniques. So we're trying to be more proactive than reactive to the care and management of street trees. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Sarah.
Great, thank you, Mark. And that is a great synopsis. If you could bring up the presentation. Like Mark said, this has been a project that's been in the works for over a year, and we can skip ahead, there's acknowledgements, Mark was a huge help as the liaison for this project, as well as other members of the Groton community. Next, please. Oh, Mark has the power.
I think I do. I did, I, yeah.
Oh, great.
That was my fault. I was kidding about pop-ups.
So the unresult of this project is the Groton Community Tree Management Plan. And about halfway through the process of developing the plan, we created this vision statement with input from the community. So this vision statement, championing community-led stewardship and amplifying diverse voices for resilient and sustainable forest management. Groton has a long history with its trees, and by embarking upon this project, it really puts the money where your words are going, that this is an important resource for the community, not just for the residents, but for visitors as well, and needs to be managed and maintained for the future. Next, please. So the process of developing this plan in urban forestry, a common model is asking, what do you have? What do you want? How do you get what you want? And then incorporating a feedback loop. Next, please. And so we'll go through the different phases of the project that fit into that model, asking what do we want, or what do you have by undergoing the tree inventory? What do you want with the community engagement? The Community Tree Management Plan answers, how do you get what you want? And then we'll open it to you, and hopefully going forward, there'll be a feedback loop in the management plan. Next, please. So in the tree inventory, all trees inventoried in the public right-of-ways, that's select parks and facilities. Next. And like Mark mentioned, over 3,000 trees were identified and data collected for them. That data included species, size, and condition, and using this information, Mark in the Parks Department is able to make management decisions and prioritize maintenance, like he mentioned. We also identified planting locations across the town, which will be used to prioritize planting of future trees. Next, please. So a little snapshot of the data that was collected, it's analyzed in much greater depth in the plan itself. One important index that we looked at was tree species diversity. Over 115 tree species were identified in the town. And just looking at the species, the genus and the family of the trees that were collected, it indicates the overall diversity in the town. So for example, there's the highest or the most frequently identified tree species were red maple, followed by eastern red cedar and norway maple. And a general guideline in urban forestry is to include no more than 10% of one species in your tree population. And Connecticut has experienced, unfortunately, the history of monocultures of trees, for example, with chestnut blight, Dutch elm disease, and then followed by emerald ash borer, which has wiped out many street trees across the country. So by diversifying the tree population, hopefully you combat those effects of losing large proportions of the street tree population in one fell swoop. Next, please. We also looked at the size of trees. We went out and measured the diameter of tree trunks out there, and tree size serves as a proxy for the age of trees. Trees grow in diameter as they age, and what we see here is that in recent years, there hasn't been much emphasis on public tree planting. This may be an issue in the future, since you need to plant more trees than are removed or that die out over time. Trees are living beings, just like us, they have accidents, they get sick, they get hit by cars and lightning, so they need to be replaced if you hope to maintain that street tree population. Next, please. We also ran the tree inventory data through a program called iTreeEco, which was developed by the U.S. Forest Service. So this quantifies the economic and ecosystem benefits that the trees provide, at least the ones we inventoried in Groton. So there's thousands of dollars of savings that the trees provide in pollution removal, carbon storage, carbon sequestration. They produce tons of oxygen every year. They absorb millions of gallons of stormwater runoff every year, which would otherwise have to be treated, or would just go into Long Island Sound. And if you were to replace all of the trees that we inventoried in one fell swoop with the same species, same size of trees, that would be a $13 million investment, according to this program. So trees have value and need to be maintained. Next, please. Mark already mentioned the planting that they are prioritizing. This is a map of the planting sites, and this map is just divided by neighborhood. Mark has taken the extra step of looking at historically disinvested communities who have been disinvested generally, and also in their tree resource, and putting trees where those communities are. And like you mentioned, there is a lot of grant funding out there for this focus right now. Next, please. So a few recommendations that came out of just the tree inventory- So a few recommendations that came out of just the tree inventory portion was to prioritize maintenance, develop routine monitoring and inspection cycle. You have this brand-new tree inventory data. A lot of work went into collecting that information, and it needs to be updated and maintained, or it will quickly go obsolete, and developing a planting plan. Next, please. The second phase of this project included community engagement. There were five in-person events where we'd worked with the community and talked to them about trees and about this project. There was an online and paper survey distributed that we developed. And at the end, we reached, we received comments from ninety-two respondents across the town. And this is just a general analysis of what came out of that community survey. So sixty-five percent responded having trees in their neighborhood as being extremely important. Sixty-one percent wanted more trees versus five point six wanted fewer trees in their And there are a lot of analyses in the management plan, but we'll go on for now. We also asked the community about what they think about trees, the benefits they provide and the disservices. In general, they value trees for shade, for their environmental benefits, aesthetics. When Mark was mentioning the sale outside Thrive 55, and he immediately looked at the street view of the building to see if a tree could go in there. And there is an eastern red cedar placed right next to that patio, but in general, it is surrounded by concrete and not really welcoming for a tree, unfortunately. Next, please. There are some drawbacks of trees. Number one, without surprise, is debris, specifically leaves. We do live in a deciduous forest environment. Debris in the form of falling branches and trees, lack of maintenance and care, how power lines and trees interact. And this is just a great reminder that trees, while a valuable resource, do need to be maintained and managed in order to be safely lived with. Next, please. And these are just a few quotes from the community. I especially enjoy the last one, where someone wrote in, "We love the beauty of Groton. We love all the trees." So, big kudos to Mark and his team. And just another point, that trees not only provide economic and ecosystem benefits, they also provide what's known as social cohesion. So they provide a sense of community for the town. Next, please. And from the community engagement, we developed this vision statement, which further went to guiding the management plan. Next. All right. So the management plan itself. We took data from the tree inventory, from community engagement, guided by the vision statement, and we developed a bunch of goals, objectives, and actions. Next, please. And the goals themselves were split into these four domains. So there was tree maintenance, governance, community engagement, and tree program organization. Next, please. And so for each of these domains, separate goals were developed. So for the first one, tree maintenance, the first goal was to develop a tree canopy goal. So while we did inventory trees in public spaces, a tree canopy assessment would be able to analyze not only public trees, but trees on private property, to get a greater picture of how many trees are in the community. You can even look at historical tree canopy data to see if trees have been lost or gained over time. A second goal is to review and update the tree ordinance. So look at what the ordinances say, especially with regards to development, if there are any permitting requirements and how those are enforced. A third goal is to define and attain equitable distribution of trees. So Mark alluded to several tools that are out there. There is a tree equity score map that is out there, where you can say, okay, this area has a low tree canopy coverage and a higher proportion of children or of elderly people that live in this area. It's divided up by census block. It also takes into account household income and racial makeup. For governance goals, there was a goal to evaluate the current tree planting program. So take a look at what the town is currently doing as far as offering trees, and if there are opportunities to increase tree planting opportunities. This could be in the form of tree giveaways or tree rebate programs. A fifth goal is develop a systematic tree inventory approach. So like I mentioned, there is fresh tree inventory data that's been collected. It's now up to the town to maintain that data. And I did work with Noah Feldman, the GIS analyst, and made sure that the town is able to access that data and hopefully develop a system going forward on systematic inspection and updating of that data. The sixth goal is to create benchmarks for public tree population. So this one tied in both planting, maintenance of trees, and the inventory of trees, inspection procedures, and basically recommended every two to five years, see how we're doing. You know, are you meeting the planting goals that you're setting? Are you meeting the inspection cycles that you set for yourself? Next. Community engagement is a strong domain for these goals. So one goal was to foster private property tree planting and maintenance. So again, we only looked at trees on public property, but there are many trees on, many more trees, that are privately owned. So the tree canopy assessment would play into this, and also just reaching out to the community and, you know, maybe developing a maintenance plan for them, for their household trees. An eighth goal is community engagement through tree stewardship. So this is very popular in urban forestry right now, to work with the community and basically develop a volunteer corps for trees. Educational materials can be presented to them, and they can be certified to go out and maintain trees. And this can even apply to publicly-owned trees. So if the town receives grant money to plant trees, maintenance is a huge follow-up cost that might not always be taken into consideration. So the tree stewardship program, you can train public volunteers to go out there and water trees and identifying issues in trees that are recently planted. A ninth goal is to enhance awareness of the importance of trees. So trees are an often underlooked resource, but they're now being identified as green infrastructure. They're providing benefits for the community, but those benefits aren't always seen. It's hard to say, see that a tree is creating oxygen for people or capturing pollutants that are coming off of Interstate 95. So creating an education and awareness program through social media, through the town website, and making information available, letting people know what trees are doing for them. And finally, the last goal is to align departments and programs towards a tree focus. So this would be, mean working with the tree warden, the conservation commission, which is serving as the tree advisory board right now, with Parks Department, Parks and Rec, making sure everyone's on the same page. You know, having liaisons to planning and zoning, for example, making sure they're taking tree preservation into account. Just getting everyone on board. And thankfully, that's the last of the goals that we created. Next, please. And I welcome any comments or feedback that you might have.
Council Boarderlin?
Thank you. I appreciate your thorough presentation. I'm a big fan of trees in this area and our environment. It's very interesting. The presentation before was talking about meeting, you know, a sale for focuses and under and the importance with climate change and heat, you know, rise, you know, it's so vital. For me, you know, I remember, you know, back in the day where development would come in and just, you know, say, we're going to build housings here and plow out all the mature trees and put a development in, and then they would plant small, you know, younger trees in its place, and it really would change the tapestry of the community. I happen to live in one of those neighborhoods. It wasn't my first choice at the time, and one of my reasons was the lack of trees. You just really can see it. You drive in and all you see is houses, and the trees are left on the surrounding side of the brims of, you know, what's left of forest, but the whole neighborhood is just, you know, gutted of the trees. And this neighborhood was built in eighty-nine. So I think it's very vital that we do look at ways to improve this, and this is going to affect us long after we're here. It does help with what was stated, with all the runoff and all the different ways for, you know, helping us with our, our climate, our environment. You know, we are an industrial community in nature on one side. I guess my first question to the town manager, so this survey did not include the city. Is there any way to partner with them to kind of inventory that area as well? That's my question.
Well, it'd be a new project with new costs. So, I mean, obviously, we could, you know, see if there was any interest in partnership, but it's probably a better question for the city mayor to see if they have an interest.
I think in the future, I think we should always be extending that hand if they choose to jump on or not. I just think it would be pertinent, we are one Groton, in my opinion, and the trees and the environment don't stop at a border. With us having the Navy Base, the, you know, Pfizer, EB, that side of the town has a large industrial imprint, and I firmly believe, when you look at the cancer rates and things, it has a long, you know, the climate, and if you look at the heat scores, it's sometimes even warmer in those sections. So I just think it's absolutely vital that we, if they want to, just extend the offer. Obviously, they would pay their portion, but I think it would be vital to really get a full map, since we're kind of one Groton as far as our rep center, our schools and everything else. And I think as a climate, you know, like I said, the climate doesn't stop at a border. So the impact that the city puts on the whole town, which is a great impact economically, but environmentally, it does have a toll and a cost. And I do think it would be important to kind of see if they're willing to jump on board. It's a no-brainer for me. We have to do something. I remember in the past, in other communities, when I lived in Massachusetts for a short time in college, anytime a tree--
Council Boarderlin, your time has expired. Would you like to take your second time?
Sure. No, I'll just close my sentence and say, in Mass, anytime a tree was taken down, the town used to replant it. It was part of their ordinance, and I'll take my second time later. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through the mayor. Thank you, Sarah, for the presentation, and thank you, Mr. Berry. My first, I have a couple questions. My first one has to do with, this is extensive and detailed and everything, and I know this just focused on the town. So this is just the town properties and along the sidewalks. We also have fifty-eight hundred acres of open space in the town, and this had nothing to do with that, but it's, it's basically not mentioned in here. And I, my thought is, there is no sort of tie in that we have extensive open space and that if somebody who's reading this kind of gets the sense that we have fifty-five acres of trees and we don't have the other part. So I'm not, you don't have to look at that for the, for the data and the trees and all that, but I think just having a reference that we have, you know, an extensive commitment to open space and that the two, this is just the town part, of a very large and, you know, very positive commitment to trees and all the things that trees bring. So it just seems to be not, you read through it, and it's just not there, so.
Yeah, I, I think that's something that we could add to. I'm not suggesting that we inventory all the open--
Yeah, no, I'm not either. I'm just saying, just a reference that we have. So that if somebody, if this is part of, I know, we make plans because these are used to get grants.
Right.
So if somebody's reading this, all they see is that we have fifty-five acres of trees. We own three thousand trees, but in reality, we have, I just did the math, three hundred thousand.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, I think we could add something in there so that that is clearer.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Yeah, just kind of tie the two together.
Sure.
You have a very extensive strategic plan, which I think helped you develop the goals that you have. My first, my initial question when I read this was going to be, do you have sort of a top five out of this?
Which page are you on?
I'm on page thirty-six, and it's broken down. You go into much more detail on this, so it's, it's very extensive. And you also mentioned in here that a regular budget would be two hundred to three hundred thousand, based on sort of national standards, and ours is sixty-five thousand. I guess Mr. Berry, I'm sure, will say that we need more money to do that, but is there a way that you're going to sort of use the existing funds that you have to sort of tackle all of these goals? Or have you narrowed it down to a sort of--
No, we have, we have not narrowed it down yet, but I think with this information, we're going to be able to make more strategic decisions. And I also think it's going to help us in the area of grant funding and availability. Now that we have a plan in place, I think that puts us ahead of a lot of other communities. And the fact that we've been a tree city for over twenty-eight years now, I think those kinds of things support us moving forward and getting grant money.
So this, by having all of these sort of goals, this does allow you to move in any direction at those goals?
Right. We will, I mean, we, we can't do everything at once, and to your point, we'll have to prioritize, you know, what we can do. I mean, there's dollars associated with a lot of these, so it's a matter of trying to balance that. And, you know, there's also what we have for staff. You know, there's recommendations in here for, that would require more staffing, and maybe we can implement those right now, but it's something that we plan for the future. And this is a collaborative effort between Public Works and Parks and Recreation.
Yeah, no, I think you did an amazing job. I just, the last one was just a picky on the title. It says Community, Community Tree Management Plan. Could it say Groton Tree Management Plan?
I don't know. That's a pretty big ask.
I mean, it is the Groton Tree Management Plan, and just, I mean, I don't know where the community is. Just bring Groton into it. Just say Groton Tree Management Plan, and then everybody knows what town it goes to.
Sure.
We can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All set? Anybody else have any questions, comments? Council Boarderlin?
Thanks. I think if we're going to do Groton, it should say town, since the city's not also in there, just to be clear, because it's not a management plan for the city. I think if people seek Groton, it kind of implies all of it. So right now, it's only the town of Groton, Community Management Plan. Again, I do hope, I guess to the town manager, what would we have to do? Just send an email or vote as a council? Or how do we just send a letter of, like, if this council chose, should choose to, kind of offering them to kind of inquire about this?
Well, at this stage, it's too late for the city to jump into this plan, so it'd be an entirely separate project. I talk several times a week with the city mayor. I could certainly update him on what we're doing and pass on your comments.
Yeah, I just, again, think it would be very pertinent moving forward, that anytime there's something that's affecting the whole town, we should automatically, in my opinion, extend it, and if they choose not to, then that way, we at least already did it on the front end. That's just a thought for me. But, did you want to respond to that? I saw you pulled the mic close, Sarah.
One, I'll go ahead and I'll, I'll update the city mayor on what's happening, but if we're going to talk about the whole town, just, we don't want to forget Groton Long Point is also part of the town.
Yeah. No, absolutely. I just think it would be, I mean, when we're looking at this, I think if, you know, an idea is generated from one side, it's a simple email saying, hey, we're looking into this. Do you guys want to buy in on this? And if they don't, they don't. But I think it would just be really awesome to kind of start doing that automatically. But anyway, here we are. This, you know, I think this is a, it's a very, you know, detailed document, and it really covers a lot. I do appreciate Councilor Jones's comments regarding including the trails and the state and town-owned green bands of tree cover. I think that would be pertinent, because if you, you do read this and you're not from the town, you know, you don't see things in here that, you know, we do have as far as tree coverage to make up. So I do think that would be great. And, you know, the other thing would be talking, I saw in here about education programs. When I was looking at this, I saw some other things from other towns, other states, and they did some tree education where people could, you know, meet with some type of expert, and you can look at your yard, okay, this is a quarter acre, this is what type of tree would be good for your area based on the pitch of your roof and the, and the wires. I think a lot of people aren't experts in that, and they may want to plant, but I'll tell you, for my yard, I keep looking like, God, I really would love to put a tree here. It can get a little shade, but I'm like, looking at the sidewalk, looking at the utility-- But I'm like, looking at the sidewalk, looking at the utilities, looking at my roof, right? Like, it would be nice, not everybody can afford an arborist to come out and give them expert advice. So is there a place in here or that could be in here where there could be an info session where people could kind of, kind of get information on what would be best for their, their land?
Yeah, I'll say that I think it's implied in the tree planting goal. Maybe it's not outlined precisely like you mentioned, but we can add wording about right tree, right place, which is a popular concept. Yeah, that wording can be added there.
Yeah, thank you. I think that would be cool. I think a lot of folks, like I know myself, you know, I'm not the best planter of things. I try. I have some good stuff going, and then there's things that are outside of my comfort zone. But I do think that some folks, and then having that, you know, the trees available to folks and things like that. But I think a lot of people just need help. And so I do appreciate this. This has been very informative, and I hope that we implement a lot of these ideas. Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you. Council Guyaski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I pay back on comments of Council Boarder and Council Jones. I do want to remind the public at home that state land, that includes Long Point and Haley Farm is not included. And then public-private lands such as negotiated properties, which is probably thousands of acres. And then my question is, was the golf course included? Because that's technically city, but it's, I didn't see it here on the map.
Yes, the golf course was included.
Okay. And then my next question were, and it's also, I don't see it on the map, were any of the school properties that--
No, the school properties weren't included. We don't manage the school properties.
Okay. Because it's under the forfeit. Got it. And then, I can't remember my own handwriting again, my question. My next question, did you encounter any dead trees at all during this inventory? And kind of, were they included in the overall inventory? Were they not included in the overall inventory?
Yes, there were dead trees that were encountered. I mean, there are trees out there at all stages of life, and they were identified to Parks and Rec.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then I can read my own handwriting now again. What happens if a tree's on the line? So say it's on the line of like where a house is, and there's a tree, like half of it is on town land of that right-of-way, and half of it is on private property. Is it included or is it not included?
We did try to include trees that were on the line because we are using GIS. We're not surveyors out there. So we use our best guess and the best available satellite imagery to include trees.
And typically, it seems like most of the trees are planted right on the property line because whenever we get a phone call, it's never clear. It's always right on the property line. And typically, we will have the surveyor come out just to kind of further define exactly where, whose property that the tree is on. And we do make residents aware that, because we do get phone calls about a tree that may be on town property, but there's limbs that are extending over onto private property. And we do make the homeowner aware that they, under state statute, they are allowed to trim back the limbs to the property line. And so we frequently let folks know that.
Okay. Now, through the mayor, you led to another question. What happens if a tree from somebody else's property comes on to town property? We remove it through Public Works, I'm assuming?
If a tree on private property falls on our property--
Yes.
--onto town property?
Yep.
I'll answer it.
Okay.
First state law, wherever the tree ends up, that's who's responsible for it. If our tree falls on it, typically, we would, you know, probably help it out. But there's actually a great handout from the state that explains that I could send to the council, but wherever the tree ends up, that's who's responsible.
I would appreciate that, an email personally. So thank you for that. Thank you for your work. It was a fascinating read and an excellent presentation, and I look forward to seeing these goals. And I yield back, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll take my turn. You'll be happy to know I planted twelve trees this fall. So I'm adding to the number. Then, this plan is like a hundred and one pages long. It is, can you tell me, how was this plan paid for?
This was paid through ARPA funds.
That's right. So this council has passed it to do a tree inventory and management plan.
Right. I was just going to say, I believe in here, it does recognize the fact that it did come from ARPA dollars. Yes, on bottom of the page, just inside the front cover.
Right. I just want to make sure everybody understands that this was paid for during ARPA and that the council had chosen this as something that we wanted to fund. Did you spend all of the ARPA funds?
No.
Is there any remaining?
Yes.
And what do you plan on doing with those? Is it, you're going to put it towards some kind of plan or something, implementation from some of this?
Yes, we could apply the balance towards implementing some of these plans, either putting together educational material, going out and planting more trees that have been identified, particularly in those areas that are underserved. That's, right now, is kind of our top priority.
Okay, and when I see page thirty-nine in the packet, it has all the little dots on there. Are the, all these little dots are town property? Is that what you're saying?
That's the planting plan.
Oh, the planting plan.
Yeah. Yes, those are all potential sites to plant trees.
And when you plant trees, do you plant saplings or like really small ones? Or do you plant something a little bit more mature?
Typically, we try to plant trees that have a DBH diameter, breast height of at least two and a half inches. The mortality rate is lower with a larger tree. The little tiny trees succumb to mowers and other, other factors. So we try to plant larger trees.
And as it was stated, there's, there's much that's not in here. Because, I mean, when you do look at the map of our, the overall, we have quite a canopy over our, our community. I mean, there's, there are parts in here that you can't see the roads--
Right.
--on majority of this map. So I think, on the most part, we might be doing pretty good. I think the sustainability and stewardship of them might be the more cost effect, cost to the town to maintain and cut and trim and-- Is there a possibility to, with any of the grants that you may get? Get, I don't know, I would, I'd say saplings. I don't know, maybe bigger ones, but trees that we can give to residents and have them an event where we give away trees that residents can plant them in their own property as well? Because there are neighborhoods, from what we've heard from our Sustainability and Resiliency Director, and she said there's neighborhoods that are lacking trees and which causes a heat issue. So is there a possibility to get trees to give to them? And I know that they'll have to maintain them themselves and take on the responsibility. But I know that there are, like the Arbor Day Foundation, that you can purchase trees somewhat inexpensively and possibly hand out. I've given away trees for Christmas gifts, so--
Yeah, there's actually state funding available. I believe the grant window is open right now. I periodically send Mark the list of grant opportunities that are out there. I know that in my town of Milford, we do have a grant-funded tree giveaway every year. So there are those opportunities out there.
I think that's awesome. Well, I think this is a lot of information, and I thank you. It gives like so much clarity to, I guess, in the future of what you should be planting instead of just picking out plants or trees. You could pick out the kind that we need in our community and not have an overabundance of certain type. Because as is stated in here when I was reading it, that if you have disease and insects and they kill a whole type of tree, that would really destroy a lot of a certain population. So I thank you for all this vast information.
Thank you.
All right, I don't see any more hands. Well, let me just ask you this. Is there anything else you need from us regarding this presentation to go forward? Anything that you are looking for from the council?
No, just your input. I realize it's a document that's over a hundred pages. If there's other comments or suggestions, the thought was that we would take the information received this evening, any additional information over the next few weeks, incorporate that into kind of a final plan, and then come back to the council asking for adoption of this plan.
Okay, so we can do an adoption of the plan. And then you also, it had stated that you wanted to change the tree ordinance, so there was some wording in there.
Yeah, that was one of the recommendations, yes.
Okay. So we should maybe see that coming in the future? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we might be seeing that on our agenda. Thank you so--
Actually, I'm sorry. Can I ask just a couple?
Sure, Council Russ.
Thank you. Who's our tree warden? Do we have a tree warden in the town?
Yes, Jeff Church is the tree warden.
Okay.
He works for Public Works.
Okay. And you said that the trees are kind of split between Public Works and Parks and Rec--
Yes.
--on who's responsible?
Right.
Okay. Do we have enough staff to do what we're asking for in here? And do we have, and like, what, what is the dollar amount that we're looking at? Like, if we implemented everything you're asking for here? What are we looking at?
I don't think we have a total dollar amount in there. These are mostly recommendations for the town to adopt as they can. And Mark has already embarked on that, being strategic on what to adopt.
And since we were mentioning the city, there is town-owned property in the city that I don't think was counted on the corner of Meridian and Mitchell and North. So I just wanted to throw that out, that that might want to be added because it is tree.
Okay.
It is full of trees.
Okay.
I'm just wondering if you're looking at the planting site map? Because that's just the planting sites and not--
Oh, that's where they want us to--
The entire tree--
That's where you want to plant? Okay. No, I meant in the count. I don't know that it was counted because I haven't noticed it on any of these maps when I was looking through it.
What's the intersection again?
Meridian, and it's Mitchell on one side, north on the other side. It's actually on the corner of north and Meridian. But it is town-owned property.
Take a look at it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the mayor, Mr. Berry, can you just talk a little bit about the tree ordinance? I'm just not familiar with it. What is it, what is it sort of layout? The tree ordinance?
Do you know what page that is?
The tree ordinance.
Is it in the report?
I don't know if it's directly quoted in the report.
Oh, I thought it was.
We can pull it up on the internet if that would suffice.
Just, you know, the big picture. I just, we have lots of ordinances, so I don't, it's just one that I wasn't familiar with.
There's some different sections, but the main one is Article Two under our Code of Ordinances. It deals with one thing, appointment of the tree warden and what the tree warden does and what things he has to, he or she has to sign off on. There's certain things that require a permit. Another part of that is the abatement of nuisances. We'll get calls where people's brush will grow so large it grows off their property to the right-of-way blocking sidewalk access. So this ordinance gives us the ability to first order them to cut it back or else we could eventually go in and do it ourselves and bill them. So it's mostly that type of thing. And I do see that, I think there's another section on street trees. I'd have to look at that.
Yeah, it's on page sixty-one in the report. It's Appendix A.
So it's kind of an operational ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, I see. All right. I read this whole thing today, but just when I got to the back here, I was like, okay, that's just the reference material. I kind of skipped over that.
And the proposed changes are on page sixty-four.
Oh, I see. Okay. Yeah, I don't, we don't, I don't need to have a whole discussion. I just was not familiar with it. And so you're just kind of bringing it up to date?
Yes.
Is basically what you, what you're proposing?
Exactly.
Okay. Great, thank you.
All right, seeing no more hands. I thank you, and we look forward to seeing you in the future to make the adoption of the presentation and potentially see the ordinance that we might, with your requested updates.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice Thanksgiving.
Thank you, too.
All right, up next is two zero two four dash one zero two one, Seasonal Part-Time and Non-Union Salary Updates Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty-Six. This is on page, hold on a second.
Thirty-six?
It is on page thirty-six, but the motion on page thirty-seven. Councilor Jones, would you like to take that?
Item twenty-two-four ten twenty-one, Seasonal Part-Time and Non-Union Salary Updates Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-Six. Motion to recommend a resolution adopting the July first, twenty-twenty-five Part-Time Seasonal Pay Plan and Update July first, twenty-twenty-five Non-Union Pay Plans. So moved?
Second. Moved by Jones, seconded by Russ. Good evening.
Good evening. Arneisha Green, Director of HR Risk Management. I was here last year, technically it was this year, but January. We talked about this last, and I was trying to do this a little bit earlier to allow everyone to get ready for the budget, so be a little more timely for it so departments had some opportunity for planning. This is the second year that we are doing the seasonal pay plan one year at a time, and that's because last year, if you recall, how the Connecticut minimum wage was done changed. For four or five years, it was a dollar a year for quite a while. And then it's now connected to an economic indicator. So makes it a little hard to plan for mid-budget year, but I believe everybody is doing the best they can. And I think it is a good idea for us to at least get a couple of years under our belt so we can see where this is trending and try to perhaps get a little bit ahead of it, but also understand how we can utilize it in our future planning. So for this year, the changes are not, dare I say, as drastic as last year. It was a little antiquated because it had been made some years in advance with a dollar ahead. There were some big changes last year where we looked at some of the hard-to-fill positions. We bumped them up. A couple of the ones in the police department hadn't had any increases for the five or six years, so we bumped them up as well just to get us to status quo, for lack of a better word. So this year, you'll see the changes aren't as dramatic. They do look a little sporadic because we have those interspersed positions that are due to just the economics of things. For example, drivers, whether it's a PS or CDL, extremely hard to find. After COVID, it was very hard, just in the transportation industry. And we still deal with that as well. So there are some that aren't the norm per se when you look down the road of sequential increases, but those were identified last year and have just been built upon for this year. The other, oh, and I should say, it is going from fifteen sixty-nine to January first. It's going to be sixteen thirty-five an hour. And this pay plan would be implemented for July first, which would be in accordance with our budget year, and thus the planning that departments are starting to work on now. The other item I have for you is the non-union pay plan. So this one is not a monetary change, but if you recall, earlier this year, when we had a presentation in conjunction with Gov. HR, one of the recommendations in that report was that we keep it current. So it didn't get like last time. I think it was twenty-seventeen, probably the last time that it had been updated. So the recommendation was every year to make sure that we're moving the bands themselves so that they don't get too stale. And I reached out to the list of comparable towns that we had from the report last year, which was about-- which was about 20 or so, and I heard back from about half. And not everyone had a plan for what they were doing yet for 7125, a little early for some, but I did ask what they did for 7124. And that is whether they move their ranges or they gave a cola because not every town keeps up and moves their ranges every single year. So based on that, the average was 2.8, maybe almost 2.9. So I'm suggesting an even 3% because there were a few that were projecting for 7125, two to three, three to three and a half, but only a couple really knew where they were going. So my suggestion before you is to update the min and the max of the non-union pay plan by 3%. Again, this is not an increase for any one person, so there's not a cost associated with it. It's shifting the ranges so that we're not falling behind, for lack of a better word, with our peer or comparable towns. And that would be also effective for 7125.
Council Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Director Green. So I just want to see if I understand this right. The seasonal pay plan, which is these two pages, those ones do go into effect. That's not a range, that's an actual salary that will go into effect.
Correct, so what would be going into effect is the actual change for 1-1? That's the law. That's not for the council necessarily to vote on. It's, there will be a few people who are currently on our payroll who will go to 1635. So that's outside of this pay plan. But this pay plan would be for everybody that's on it, and that would be a 7-1 change. And yes, that would be changes to actual salaries. And that's whether we have people who return every year that maybe do the kids' camp, the seasonals, or people who might work year-round. So there's kind of a mix of both in there.
And then the other two pages, which is the non-union page, that's not adjusting anybody's salary, that's just adjusting the range.
Correct.
When you bring somebody new in or you're trying to figure out what their salary's going to be. Now they have a, they have a different range than they had before.
Yes, correct, and that would be a 7125 effective date as well.
Okay. And on the seasonal pay plan, it has steps 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Is there an average amount in here? Like, is it all over the place or is it, you know, most people are in step 2 or 3? Or how does that?
So it depends on how long you've been here. If you have someone who works seasonal, every year they come back, Parks and Rec will jump them up to the next step to account for their experience and bring a little bit more to the table. If you have someone year-round, their increase comes on the anniversary date, which is what happens for most of the other positions, a majority of them in town.
Okay, so there's, I see, so they're pretty much locked in. It's just the grid, they just look at how many years and you just pick it. Okay. Do you see this, what you've done here, is it going to ripple through all of our union contracts and such too, in terms of pay raises? You know, the percentages?
That is a negotiations question. Everything ripples.
But it's, you sort of, average increase is 3%, so I'm just saying, do you think that that's, when would, when Town Manager Burt's planning his budget, is he going to plan something around 3%?
So in the past, looking at the chart that's always in the budget book, it was 2, 2 and 1/4, we've transitioned 2 and 1/2. A lot of them are 2.75 as it's currently indicated. So the trend is changing over the years.
Okay. And this is based on the Consumer Price Index?
For Connecticut?
Yep.
Federal Employment Cost Index.
Which is tied to inflation, tied to...
It's an economic indicator.
Economic indicator, okay. Okay, so the non-union goes into effect July 1 of 2025?
Yes.
And the other one goes into when they, whenever they, whenever they come, which is usually in the summertime, but...
The seasonal, I would say, almost everything on it is also 7125. The only thing we can't control is the minimum. So anybody who's at the minimum would move January 1. But everything else on here is a 7125 effective date.
Gotcha, okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Council Gudzinski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I kind of piggyback off Council Jones, who did steal some of my thunder. The only position I see that's part-time that's minimum wage is the library page job. So that's just one that would affect technically based on, actually, there's a couple. I'm like, I like.
There is a couple, and a lot of them might be seasonal people who might be helping out with weekend items. There are some at 1620. There's one 1610, 1620. So there's a couple of people who will move up just because they're captured within that 1635 range.
Yeah, that makes sense now that I'm looking at it. It doesn't make up for the minimum wage increase. And is it, has it been our, what I see, I noticed on the July 20, July 1, 2025, for our part-time workers, we only have one position that would be at minimum wage if you start, for your start. Is that a recruitment tactic that we're kind of trying to increase? I'm just trying to figure out why it's only one when these are... You get what I'm saying. I hope you get what I'm saying.
What are you saying?
Yeah.
What is your question?
My question is, is I see at the start for all the 28 part-time jobs, all of them would be above minimum wage on July 1, 2025. Is the reason for that, with the exception of the library page job, is the reason for that because help with recruitment? Or like, an example is why doesn't office clerk start at 1650 instead of possibly a minimum wage? Or is it that level, maybe it's that level?
Okay. The levels, AKA the classifications, have been the same for quite a while, so I haven't adjusted them to say, you know, suddenly let's jump library page up from a step, a level 1 to a level 4. That is based on the responsibility and the complexity of a position, much like the salary survey that we had earlier this year, and they were ranked, basically. So these positions, you could say, should be in, I don't want to say sequential order, but sort of, as far as the responsibilities that are held within that position. And there are some that are an anomaly, let's say a CDL driver, because that is a harder to fill, so you have to meet the market on that. So a library page, going by that perspective, would be one of the tasks that don't quite require as much responsibility, independent decision-making, judgment calls, and then you're stepping it up from there. So you would start with the minimum wage with that position, and I do believe there's actually nobody in that position. And then you would continue to increase based on what each position brings to the table or is responsible for, I should say.
Okay. Somebody answered my question, but I'm going to take another stab and try and ask me it again. I see the library 8 position. I don't know why I'm picking on the library, but I am. It, the start for it is 1650, which is 15 cents above minimum wage. My question is, what makes that position 15 cents more than the minimum wage?
So why not start with minimum wage?
Yeah, like, why not?
Okay, so I think we want, got it, some attempt at competitiveness? And it's not only competitiveness for the start rate, but also what is the in-between? What is the increase that somebody is getting? So when somebody comes back for the next year, not only are they getting the increase that's built into the base wage for most of these, but you're also jumping up a step. So you're moving in two senses. So there's multiple ways for us to be competitive, slightly competitive.
Okay, that, that's kind of where I was...
And if you're not keeping on for the flesh here, you're less likely to come back again. Yeah, you could find the money somewhere else for another job.
And then through the mayor, the minimum wage law, that increases by price index yearly or by yearly, okay?
It's yearly, and they announce it in the fall now, or at least they have the last couple of years.
Okay, all right. That is it for me. Thank you, Director Green, for your work on this.
You're welcome.
And I yield back, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Council McBride?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. The seasonal part-time, I completely understand. I just have some questions on the non-union salary updates. The purpose, I'm assuming everybody's within the range currently in that?
At what?
Every unaffiliated is within the range currently?
Almost, yes.
Almost, okay. The purpose for the, the increase in the range, is that for hiring future individuals? Because it's not, we're not increasing any of their salaries. So is it just for a future hire?
It is, I would say recruitment and retention. So from a recruitment perspective, we want to make sure that our wages are not falling behind other comparable towns. And then from a retention perspective, if we have any long-term people here, they could hit up against the top of that. So at some point, yes, you're going to reach the top, but this is a brand-new wage range, so I wouldn't suggest not doing any adjustment to it. And then moving that percentage would allow people to move up with it. There's a couple of people that are close, they're not over it. So I look at it as retention and recruitment.
And I understand that completely. I guess my question is, should this be really in the, in the alternative motion? It says July 20, July 1, 2025, non-union pay plan, but we're not really approving a pay plan, we're really approving a maximum, minimum and maximum salary range plan?
Whatever you would like to call it. May they sound the same?
I understand that. I understand it as we're approving a range for future pays where Town Manager Burke can go back. But we're not approving a pay plan for any of these positions.
A range is a pay plan. I guess if you know it as something different, each municipality could call it something different. I consider them the same, but...
Okay.
I would say a range is part of a pay plan. You can have a pay philosophy, and we haven't gone down those roads yet to really expand on the theory of it. But for me, this range comprises the pay plan.
So if, let's say, this were to pass and Town Manager Burke comes forward and asks us to increase wages, we would just make sure they're within this range to ensure their increase in pay? That's really what this is for?
You know, we're going to build, you know, we build in raises as part of the 7-1 budget, but we want to make sure if new people are coming in, it's competitive. But also that, you know, morale goes really downward when you max people out too quickly. So there's no upward mobility.
Okay, no, I understand that. I'm just confused in terms of being a pay plan versus a salary range. But thank you for your answers.
Yeah, I can also go back and look at what we entitled it in the, well, it looks like last, yeah, it looks like we called them pay plans in January, and I can look back at what the report called them as well and what it's always been called. But the outcome, I think, is the same regardless of the titling.
If council wants to change the name, that's fine.
Well, it's actually titled as Updates. If you look at the top. Are you looking at the alternatives, Council McBride? Or are you looking at the top title?
I was one looking at the specifics to the unaffiliated where it says on the top, the minimum salary range and the maximum salary range, and I was comparing that to the proposed motion, which states it's a non-union pay plan. And I was having a disconnect between why it's being called a pay plan versus a, a salary range. I guess it's just...
Because the actual title of it is called Update. It don't say pay plan.
Oh, so there's no necessarily motion to be moved forward?
We're just sort of saying these are the numbers that we're okay with them changing to.
Okay, I didn't know if there was a motion.
Oh, there is a motion.
There's a motion. It's been read by Jones, seconded by Russ.
And that was my question. The motion states it's a pay plan, and I just...
Correct.
And I did look, in 17, it was called a wage range in 17. It was a town-owned, non-union wage range.
It looks like the January motion was updated non-union classification and compensation plan with salary adjustments and seasonal was called pay plan. So I think it was called something different in January because it was a whole big update that we did to everything.
So the part where it says pay plan, should we change that to update?
Let me just look at the attachments.
Would you be comfortable with that motion instead of 25 non-union pay plan reading the 2025 non-union wage ranges?
Wage range, and it looks like under the attachments, it's listed as wage range. So I use them interchangeably. I don't know if it matters terribly which one it is.
Council McBride, would you like to make an update or...
Yeah, certainly, I'd make an amendment, is that?
Yeah.
I'd like to make an amendment to the proposed motion to adopt the updated July 1, 2025 Part-Time Seasonal Pay Plan and updated July 1, 2025, Non-Union Minimum and Maximum Salary Range Plan.
Second.
Should, so one would be called a pay plan and one would be called a wage range?
I think the purpose is just to say it's a salary range plan, that it's not a specific pay plan. It's, you know, adhering to your, you know, you set forth the salary ranges, so I just want to encapsulate the salary ranges in there, that's all.
Got it.
Yeah, and my understanding is if we, at some point in the future, encapsulated kind of doing the same stuff, one step to, and really defined that that would become a...
That's what I was wondering if that was what you see as the difference.
So I have an amendment by Council McBride, seconded by Parker. And let me make sure I have it correct. The motion is, what is being changed is the last two words from pay plan to salary range plan. Correct?
That's fine, that works.
Is that what you're, that's what you said, correct?
I had minimum and maximum, but I'm okay with salary range plan. Salary range plan, it's fine.
Minimum, maximum as well, is that what you said?
Originally, yes, a non-union minimum and maximum salary range plan.
So after where it says non-union, it then strike pay plan and add minimum and maximum salary range plan, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. And the motion was by McBride, seconded by Parker. Is there any discussion? Councilor Parker?
I'm sorry. He still has time.
Oh, do you want to have any? Council Parker?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Green, so, or actually, do you, to Mr. Burt, just a question about the salary range. This is for open positions now or are they're filled currently? For page 40, for the minimum salary range and the maximum?
It's for all non-union positions, so most of the vast bulk could be filled currently.
They're, I'm sorry, repeat that, they're currently filled?
Yeah, the vast bulk of them.
So...
And these positions would go up anyways on July 1, so there's not a lot of impact.
Yeah, so the impact, my question would be for the budget purposes, are you putting in the maximum range for them when you're doing this budget plan?
No, we still will do the, whatever we do for all the, you know, whatever. I'm not locked in yet, but let's say we did 2.75% this year. That's exactly the way it would be done for the next year.
From the minimum wage or the current?
No, from where the current wage is. And then if someone new comes in, they'll start at the bottom.
Okay.
Well, for vacancy though, I think, I can't remember if I was talking to the Finance Director or someone else about where we should be budgeting. I don't know if it's realistic to say that somebody new in the non-union plan is going to come in right at the bottom anymore.
I think there's a little touch play for like two steps up, something like that.
I mean, we eliminated a hard stop of where you come in because not only was it old, it was really limiting where we could bring people in. So I wouldn't say the midpoint, that might be a bit high for budgeting purposes, not to say somebody couldn't actually be hired at that if it, if it fit. I don't know if we want to look at the 25th percentile. I wanted to talk with the Director of Finance again about it.
Okay, so since you're saying that, my concern would be, some of these are jumping. If we go up to the maximum, for instance, some of them have a jump of between $15,000 to about $45-ish thousand dollars that we weren't anticipating. So what my concern is that we make sure that if we're doing this, that we already have the money. But we don't want to offset the budget so much that we're finding places where we have to cut somewhere else.
I don't see this having a lot of impact beyond already doing whatever percent we're going to do.
And it would be budgeted in. This is for 7125, so the budget that you guys haven't gotten yet. And also, it's extremely rare for us to bring anybody in at the top. It's not necessarily a best practice to max somebody out upon hire.
I don't know, I've seen it more than once or twice in my seven years.
Well, that's, yeah, since we've been doing this for... Well, that's, yeah, since we've been doing this for quite a while.
Someone would have to have a whole lot of, you know, you might be hiring a director, and they have a wealth of experience, and already making that much, you might have to pay that much to get a person.
And although the max might be increasing a percentage, the higher up you go, obviously 3% of the top is going to be higher, that doesn't necessarily mean our budget is going to be impacted by that same amount, because when we're budgeting for vacancies, it's in the lower range anyway. So that top number is not affecting that, and also the majority of them are filled, so most of them are going to be budgeted off of the actual salary of people.
Any more questions? Okay, see no more hands, let's take a vote on 2024-1021, seasonal, part-time, and non-union salary updates, amended motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes 7, 0, to 0. We will, we will vote on it along with the main motion, with the amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes 7, to 0, to 0.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And you have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
You too.
Thank you. Could I ask for a recess, please? Sounds lovely, thank you. All right, so it is 8:19, and we're going to take about a 10-minute recess.
Okay, it is eight thirty-two and we are back from recess. Up next is two zero two four dash nine eight four, our legislative priority discussion. This is on page forty-two, forty-three of our packet. There is no motion that has been made in advance. At our next meeting, we'll be having our state legislators here and we will be sharing with them what we as a council would like to present as our priorities. Historically, they come to us and the council has basically said what their own individual wants and would like to be. And what we have figured out with discussions with the legislators are they would prefer a united front with things that the town needs and our priorities so that they can as a united front work on trying to get some of these items for us. And in our packet are some items that have been listed that I believe Mr. Burke has pulled together for us. Mr. Burke, do you want to talk on this?
These are the things that we had some reasonably accurate numbers to work with in case we wanted to put in for capital project bond funding from the state, but there's quite a bit of work into putting the information together. So, you know, if you're going to pick any out, keep it pleased to two or three max. Because you're, you know, what do you really want to focus on this year for a bond ask? It's not bad to have a second one as a backup, though, if they don't like the one, you've got to give them another option.
Okay. And in the previous fiscal year, the council focused on various capital project funding requests such as Sutton Park construction as well as engineering for the former Fitch Middle School building, and neither one of those were awarded. So...
Though, just to mention, previous year, we did get some funding, though, for Sutton Park through the state.
Can you also just very quickly tell us, do you know for the Board of Education which schools are going to be tested for HVAC? Is it going to be Charles Barnum and Fitch High School first?
I have not been told yet.
Okay. Because they have to test this with an architect and engineering firms, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So...
Well, I should just say, though, right now, there's no grant. You know, you could apply for dollars just to replace it, you know, without having to have the test because it's going to testify for brand new. But that program to offset costs doesn't exist right now where you had to have the testing to get the grant dollars. So this is a little different than that, asking for bond dollars.
All right. So there's different ways we can do this. We can go around and have question and answers. We could go line by line and see if there is what the, as we did with our goals, and see who votes to say this is what I think is my top priority and see which gets the most, like consensus or votes on to say that's a top priority.
Point of information?
Your question.
Did we already complete Sutton Park?
Yes, yes.
So we should just cross that line out?
Yeah.
Okay. And Piquanik Plains Park is a different project?
Yes, that's the, just starting to fundraise for that one.
Okay. So we just cross out Sutton Park? Okay.
Point of information or question or clarity with, I forget what it's called.
Point of information, your question?
Point of information. I have notes and questions that I have, but they're more legislative in nature, not necessarily capital focused. So are we going to discuss certain legislative things that we would like them to?
Yes, that's the next part of this. Yeah, the second page.
Okay, okay.
All right. So...
We usually go, you know, for some sort of bottom project to at least try.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
All right. So how about we deal with this in the two parts? But first, we look at the CIP, like basically our outstanding upcoming CIPs and see what people think are priorities on here. And then we can basically take a vote here and see how many people think, which ones are the priorities, and that will set a goal for them, our legislators, when they come. So do you want to discuss, would you like to go through these, Mr. Burke, and just describe them? First of all, what the situations are with each one of them and where we are in them very quickly?
Yeah, I don't have my notes for each one. And we've heard repeatedly from the Board of Ed ones, if you want, I could pull something, information up on it. But the first one, Charles Barnum HVAC, which is a $2.3 million cost as well as the Fitch High School HVAC, and he's replacing it, just over $5 million, so a couple of high-ticket items. But give me one sec if I can get to it.
Point of information?
Your question.
Would you rather that we ask questions as we go through or wait till the end and then ask questions?
There's a possibility Mr. Burke might be able to answer some things as he first gives a description so that we maybe understand what some of these are and the needs. And then we can open it up to questions and then we can take a quick vote on each one of them.
Point of information?
Your question?
My question is, how did these get on here versus, say, like, like improvement of athletic fields at the high school, for example? Like, that would be one of my list of things that would be a priority, maybe not over some of these, but how come that one didn't make it, I guess? You know what I mean? That's my question.
This came from the list we discussed a few weeks back, dropping off the ones that we don't have a cost on. So these are the ones we'd be, you know, and the Athletic Fields Task Force is considered one kind of one big project. Certainly, this is not meant to be all inclusive. The council could choose something totally different.
Mr. Burke...
Okay, that was my question, because if this is our ideas or thoughts, I just didn't know that this were framed to just this grid here.
You can add things if you would like. Mr. Burke, these are items that you are prepared to give information and backup?
That we have, yeah.
We are ready to give a presentation to the state saying we are prepared and ready to do this. Is that correct?
Correct. You know, I think the, I'm still waiting on this year's facilities request from the Board of Ed. I'll have to pull up last year's budget. One sec. So for the Charles Barnum HVAC with the school wrote, just a little background information, Dr. Charles Barnum Elementary School, built in the 1960s. Heat and fresh air are provided by individual unit heaters and by the openings of doors and windows. While some mini splits of window AC equipment has been retrofitted, a more comprehensive HVAC system would provide for improved air quality control and should be installed. And the request at that time was for the $2,318,000. Do you want me to move on to the next one?
Sure.
Okay. Fitch High School HVAC. Let's see. That's athletics, one sec here. Kind of short on this one. While many areas of Fitch High School were renovated in 2008, a building project, the 1950s vintage section did not get an updated HVAC system to provide for improved air quality control. This area should be upgraded. So that's at a cost of $5 million and change, $5,45,000, $54,000. Next one, culinary arts, $600,000 at the Fitch High School. Let's see. With the Groudon Public Schools focus on college and career readiness, we're expanding our careers pathways program to ensure our students are workforce-ready. A very popular career pathway for our students is the culinary arts program. The program fills to capacity and many students are turned away. There is a need for a more robust culinary arts program that can serve more of our students and ready them for entry-level jobs in the restaurant industry. This would require upgrading of the current cooking and cleaning stations to a more commercial grade equipment. Estimated cost, $600,000. I should note, I believe I saw on a, on the agenda for the Board of Ed next week, they're going to discuss their own legislative priorities too. So just to mention that. Moving on to Northeast Academy and Katherine Kolnaski Air Quality. There's been concerns about it. There have been concerns about excessive humidity in the Northeast Academy and Katherine Kolnaski Stern Elementary Schools. The district contracted with the engineer firm, Fosse &amp; O'Neil, to determine the cause and possible remedy for the issues. The study concluded with the recommendations for both short and long-term solutions. The long-term recommendations in the engineering report is a replacement of the air handling units with units that provide dehumidification. Could be done all at once, or you could, you know, you could do a unit and blocks of two. There's different ways you could tackle it, but if you were going to do the whole thing, it's a $2.2 million cost. Rehab of the former Fitch Middle. As you know, we have the community center in the former Fitch Middle. We have voter registration. We have a couple other small things over there. It's extensive. If we really want to use it, put the probate, one idea is a probate judges in there. It's going to cost about $11,000, $11,400,000. I, you know, we need more engineering before we'd be ready to move for that, and we tried for that last year. My feeling is, at least my own feeling, we could ask the legislators, but they want to see something more buildable, ready to go, and $11.4 million is unlikely to get funded. Skipping over Sutton Park, since that is completed, we have the replacement of the Piquanik Plains Park playground. That is our only fully accessible, ADA-accessible playground. We have pieces and other ones, but that's fully ADA-accessible. Estimated cost of, it's somewhere between $800,000 to $1 million, but going at the high end, putting in a million, because it's always the high end, if not more. Schenectady Golf Course irrigation, this is going to need to be done in the next few years. Doesn't necessarily have to be, I put it on there because it's on the radar, but it doesn't necessarily have to be done this second, but it's a pretty significant cost. My own feeling on this is for whatever fund balance the parks rec receive, I'd like to see that money rather than little CIPs. I'd rather than start putting money towards this specific project because it'd be hard to fund otherwise. So I'm not recommending this myself for a bond issuance this year. Main Street No Ink Reconstruction. Remember, we had a series of public meetings, see what the public know and want with Main Streets and pretty rough street, shape there. Rough estimate right now, about $2.8 million to redo that street, to do the bulk of what's Pavement management, this came from that list a few weeks ago. It's really just doing more roads, so I'd say strike that one. I was asked recently about the Groudon Long Point Road Bridge over Amtrak. The, this is the last year of the 50%, what was 50% funding, it's probably less than 50% now from the state as costs have gone up over the years for, oh, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one, I'm looking at the next one. The Amtrak one's the one we're waiting on, that's a, or the Groudon Long Point Bridge over Amtrak, that's the one, that's an orphan bridge. Policy of the DOT Department of Transportation is that towns must pay 15%. We are trying to find alternate grants to help pay for that or to get a waiver in the policy. So that's still up in the air, and I've been communicating with our three legislators about that, is that progresses? No decision yet. I checked last week, still no decision on the policy from DOT, but my preference is not to pay it. Last one, North St. John Road Bridge is the one I was asked about recently. There's, I think it's about 600 or so thousand the state put in. This has been escalating over the years, maybe 700,000. And that money goes away this year. And as you know, there was a couple of years early on, Stonington was willing to fund it, and there's times the town council was willing to fund it. It's never got on the same page. Now, Stonington's had some other priorities, including another bridge that creates more of an issue for them than this one. But just to know that if we don't do something soon, any funding from the state, we could try to request and maybe we could get that. If there was interest, we could try to see if we could hold over that 600,000, but we're still at the point of, my feeling is it'd be hard to get Stonington to fund part of it. It'd probably be all on the town of Groudon.
Point of information?
Council Boarder, on your question?
I know in years past, we've asked Stonington to get around the table with us ahead of time. Do we know as of today if they're willing to? Because I guess if they're not, that should be just noted on here, like we, are we just kind of guessing yes or no, we don't know? That's my question.
I've talked to them so many times about it. I forget when the last time was. I think a few months ago. I could reach back out to her to see, but last I heard, there was no interest.
Okay.
But I can get back to you on that.
Okay. So we'll open it up to questions if anybody has any questions or comments about anything. Council Jones.
So my question's on the former Fitch Middle School. The impression had come back that if we went, put too many people in there, it would sort of trigger a full bringing it up to code and stuff, and that was like a $30 million cost. What is the difference between that cost and this cost? Have we, can we go back to sort of a partial?
Yeah, this would rehab A Wing, which I believe is the front wing, which would include potentially, you know, there was some talk of Parks and Rec on one floor and probate court as well as the auditorium, restrooms, all those necessary things. It doesn't touch, basically, it goes from A to D for wings, and D's that back part that's only used for storage behind the community center.
So that bigger number was all of those.
So A's the big upfront, the large upfront, two-story portion.
So you're thinking just do one, one, the A portion of it?
Right.
Don't worry about the other portions?
Yeah.
Because the total cost might be that 30 million, but this was, this was that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
This is our latest, about two years ago, you know, it could have risen a little bit, but we had a professional reevaluate this in the last two years, so.
Okay.
Quick information, point of information, you said, though, we don't have enough engineering completed on that for the state.
Yeah, we had put in for 600,000 more in engineering, and we'd have to do that first or make that part of it. So I would say if we're serious about sometime wanting the funding, we should probably first fund the rest of the engineering.
Thank you. You still have time, sorry.
On the Northeast Academy, that building has struggled, and we have, I think we run both heat and air conditioning at the same time. Is this what's going to fix that building?
That's what the engineers say, yes.
So it's really like a million dollars apiece, or is that, you think that just divides in half that number?
I don't know if it's exactly in half or not. I'd have to ask the Board of Ed. And then, once they have their meeting next week, you know, I'm assuming they're going to talk about some of these things too, and we can update any numbers we have.
Okay.
You know, if they have newer numbers than what I have.
It just seemed like it was sort of endlessly looking for money to repair that building. So it just seems like a low number, that's all from looking at the other ones, and you're getting two buildings out of this. So I kind of question that number. Okay. And then, have we completed, we put a CIP for the engineering on No Ink, correct? Did we do that already, or is it just, is it just meetings we've had?
We've, I believe we've done some engineering. I can't say that we won't need any further, but one sec here. If you give me a, I'll try to find it.
Didn't we do that last year? We, or the year before, we did a CIP?
Yeah, we definitely did a process with an engineer. I think it was two years ago, one sec.
I think it was two years ago.
Twenty-four budget, I think. Give me one second, I don't really know what it says. Just a little background on it. Main Street No Ink has deteriorated to the point where it must be reconstructed. The cost-effective strategy as defined in our pavement management program is to perform rehabilitation and maintenance on any road whose pavement management index is 50 or greater. Roads falling below that level and is programmed for reconstruction under the separate project and funding, as this is more than a repaving project. Let's see. To properly reconstruct the pavement of Main Street, several components of the road must be addressed, including drainage, parking, sidewalks, existing and proposed utilities and the character of the road in relationship to the surroundings. These components must be decided with public input, which has been ongoing for the last year and a half or so before design has started. Main Street is about, I'll go into those details. So in '23, $75,000 were awarded to hire consultants to prepare a concept plan that was presented to the public. And then '24, $300,000 was allocated to prepare, to prepare a design so that detailed cost estimates can be provided for potential bond referendum. That's how this language reads. Not necessarily that's what you do, but that's how it reads for, for November of '25. So the intent is with that money to get to that point of construction.
Okay. So that's, the 2.8 is for the construction part?
Yes.
And I remember all the other stuff.
Yeah, that's Greg's latest, Greg Hanover, the Public Affairs Director's latest number.
Okay. I know that the Board of Ed was doing a, having a surveys done of all their buildings for the HVAC stuff. Have those surveys been done, and is that now incorporated into your numbers?
No, these are, they have not submitted anything new to me. I don't believe they had yet. I think it was just in the last few weeks they were talking about, still about getting those surveys. So I'm not sure they're going to have them in time for...
So these numbers might not be correct, is that?
It could change, yes.
It could change. Okay. But do they anticipate, we don't even know when they anticipate having those surveys done?
No. But these are engineers' rough, you know, estimates.
It's just, okay. All right.
Again, they might have some updated engineering numbers next week when they meet, so I could reach out to Sam Kilpatrick to see if they have anything new.
When's our legislative meeting? Next week?
Mm-hmm.
No, it is the 10th. It's the cow.
December 10?
December 10. Two weeks.
Two weeks, sorry.
Three weeks.
So you might have some better information by then on these numbers. Is the Culinary Arts Program something, can the, the Board of Ed go out and get grants for their own things? Is this a kind of a grantable kind of item?
I wouldn't think so.
It comes up...
It's pretty prime for a grant.
Since I've been doing this, this has come up every single year for the last years, I mean, years and years, so. But they could go do this on them, on their own.
Certainly.
Yeah, okay.
Or the non-lapsing fund dollars in the future.
Have very good use of it. Okay. Thank you.
Council Rusk?
Thank you, Meta Mayor. Charles Barnum HVAC. Charles Barnum tends to be a high military children's school. My kids went there. Is there any federal grant dollars for that based on the population that goes to school there?
Not that this Board of Ed has heard of, but last I've heard from Sam, but I can check again. But I don't believe there is any at this time.
Okay. And honestly, there's...
Of course, they get a certain amount of Department of Defense dollars supplemental each year, but this year's the gap year where they're not going to receive it because there wasn't enough military families. Hopefully, the next year it'll come back. That can be used for absolutely anything.
Okay. But it's not...
And that would only be in the $500,000 range historically.
Okay. I guess my head, I want to get the biggest bang for our buck, but within a reasonable range. I feel like $11 million is a little bit, personally, is a little out of range. So I'm kind of looking at, I mean, my brain thought, or my thoughts on this is how can we get the most? And I'm looking at Main Street reconstruction and Charles Barnum and Northeast Academy and Clodchester air quality as being things that probably really need to be done as quickly as possible. Is that an accurate assessment?
Yeah, it's also, and if... Yeah, it's also, and if the council so wished it, this could also go on the December 3rd agenda and hopefully we would, except for I don't know what day they meet next week. Is it probably Monday night they might talk, let me, I could check that out. But if, yeah, if you wanted more information on certain things, I could certainly, I could make initial, you know, thoughts tonight, I can always come back with some more information.
Thank you.
Point of vision?
Your question?
Counsel Rusk said Clodchester, did you mean Fitch?
I'm sorry. CK, Captain Kalnowski and Northeast Academy.
Okay, so your list was, you were.
I was, I'm.
Yeah, no, I just.
We're going to go through that.
Yeah.
We don't have to get a clear number yet. Any other questions? Counsel Byaski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question for the Town Manager. I'm aware that the, as far as I'm aware, the Fitch Culinary Arts Wing is in the vintage section of the building. That would, would that, what, would that development have any impact on the Fitch High HVAC construction?
Well, they've asked for it separately, so, you know, it's a question better for Sam Kilpatrick, but my understanding is it could be done independently.
Okay. And then. What is part of the A Wing of Fitch Middle School?
It's basically everything up front leading to the community center. It's the two stories up front. So you have voter reg, the voter registrars in there. It's pretty much, you know, there's some training that goes on in there, a little bit of other stuff, but it's mostly empty. But it's where we talked about probate court, potentially parks and rec moving from, from their current facilities, kind of condensing to this, as well as, there's some thought of potentially IT to get their servers out of the basement, you know, flood area of our building, so. But it's just that whole front area.
Okay. And does the, is the old auditorium in that area?
Yes.
As well, okay. Just for a separate committee. And then the aquatic planes park playground, that, you mentioned, I casually mentioned fundraising, is the $1 million the total cost or the fundraiser cost?
The tot, well, they just started fundraising and they're not going to get a million dollars. They'll do what they can, but yeah, the estimate's up to a million.
Okay. And then. Do you know how long it would be like we could get shovels in the ground, quote unquote, for the Main Street reconstruction in No Inc.?
I'd want to check with Greg, with Greg, and I think he's still finalizing some, you know, getting full direction from the public, so it, my guess is it would be, and then by the time you finish up the engineering, you know, potentially next summer.
Okay. Where I'm at is, I think the rehab for the A Wing is going to be too much of an ask. It's been rejected once. The NEA and CK air quality is definitely top of my priority, just because I know they're running heat and air and that would potentially save some taxpayer dollars if you only had to run one. And then my second would be the No Inc. reconstruction. And then my third would, third slash four would be one of the HVACs, probably the Fitch High one first because it's a higher cost, but knowing with that higher cost, CB could also be an option for me as well. So I'm not really particular on those HVACs. But that's it for me and I'll go back.
Okay. Anybody else have anything they want to share? Counsel McBride?
Thank you. Yeah, looking at the HVACs, I recall seeing some DAS programs where they provided those programs free, so I did some quick research. In 2022, Governor Mount signed legislation to allow HVACs. 178 million in grants were awarded to schools, so I have one question, why we didn't look into this in 2022, but.
And, and those funds are gone now?
Right, they're going, and that's our reading, but it does say here, whoever given the importance, yada, yada, yada.
They hope to get it back, yeah.
Lamont and DAS are exploring 2025 legislative options to include the program as a permanent category in school construction. So I think that comes into the next topic of making sure these HVAC plans with our legislators to try to put down the 2025 legislative agenda, so these could all be captured in, in that instead of the bond financing. So that would be our first comment.
And, and it's a 50, it was a 50%.
50 grand?
Yeah, we had to pay it all up front. You have to commit to it up front, the town, for the full costs and then you'll get reimbursement for 50%.
So similar.
That's how it was in the previous program, yeah.
And I think that would be the way to go for those, in my personal opinion.
If the funding gets back, yeah.
Secondly, I guess it's just an overriding question. My understanding of the bond commission is they try to fund projects that, and Tom and Greg, you know better than I do, but don't they tend to have, tell a story behind these projects, whether or not it's housing or coastal resiliency or jobs or, or development plans?
That's why, that's kind of what I was getting at, rather than just engineering drawings.
Right, so that's why I'm looking at these projects different. Although some of these projects, I would say, would be my first priority from, from the town standpoint, but from a bond commission standpoint, I think, my opinion is you need to, at least I think we need to, or I would tend to favor the ones that tell a story, whether it's what the bond commission's going to reward. So some of these, you know, you mentioned pavement management, you know, that's something the bond commission, I would think, wouldn't consider because it's not, they're not telling a story behind it, so I think.
But maybe Main Street.
I'm sorry?
But maybe Main Street.
Maybe Main Street, I'm just saying, I think it's a different, different view, different lenses we're looking through for this, so my, my priorities would be a little bit different. Not that I would favor different priorities if it was from a town, but from the bond commission, I think we need to look at it as, you know, like the North Stonington Bridge, is that a public safety issue? Is that something that the bond commission would support? You know, jobs or, there's nothing on here for housing, but let's say jobs like that Fitch Culinary Arts. You know, can this story be told that that's job promotion, career development, it's something that the bond commission would get behind? Although it may not be my top priorities, it's something that can be sold to the bond commission. So I'm, I'm taking a little bit different look at this from the bond commission standpoint. The playground, you know, can we, can the story be told about what that brings to the, to the neighborhood, what that brings to the, to the area? Is that a benefit? So that's kind of where, I'm looking at them a little bit differently. So that does all I wanted to, is give my points on. I, I think looking at it from a different view may be the way to go.
No, I do think there's a story to tell with air quality for kids, but.
And I don't disagree, I'm just saying it could be, if the 2025 legislation allows it, it could be a different route to, to get that. Sorry, you'll.
Here also.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Board Line?
Uh, thanks. Yeah, I can appreciate what Counsel McBride just stated. But looking at these, you know, it, it is concerning because the HVAC sat for me for so long, even when these grants were out there. I mean, you know, I know we funded Sutton Park, which is a beautiful asset to our community, but yet our HVACs are suffering. So it is, it is priorities, I guess. You know, I think that park is going to benefit a lot of people. It's off this list, but looking down here, you know, for me, if I'm looking at practical things, HVAC to me would be top of my list and I couldn't pick one of them, I'd have to pick them all. I also think, you know, I mean, North Stonington Bridge, we don't have enough information tonight to know that, you know, even if Stonington's interested, so kind of off the table in my mind in that respect only because I don't feel like the proper, for me, the backstory homework is done for that, so I can't make a definitive decision. I don't want to say yes to that and we don't have any other, the other support. So I don't know. I, I also feel like for me, when we talk about bonding, you know, I know that the, you know, I can't speak about the whole athletic task force, but I know originally when I got involved with it, it was a bunch of family, community members, some that are no longer on there, that were concerned about the high school fields as such. And then we started looking at all the fields. Definitely from a high school standpoint, to me, that tells a major story in comparison to our counterparts in New London, New London County. We have the most adorable fields in southeastern Connecticut as far as competitiveness and quality. Our track has not been resurfaced, the, the, the long jump pit, our pole vault area, I mean, actually, when they resurfaced the track, they didn't do the long jump pit, so that's the original one back when I was there. Our, our concession stand, you know, and, and then our field house. That to me sounds like it tells a story and is a priority along with the HVAC. So I don't know. I mean, I, we can go around, I think everyone's going to have their own sensitivity. I think they're all important projects to one degree or another. But, you know, this HVAC thing is kind of going on, gosh, HVAC was talked about when I think when I was on the RTM and it's still sitting here, so. But yet we fund other projects, so I don't know. I, I guess where, where do we see the priority and how come it has not been a priority is my concern? Even if this legislative stuff does not go through, we need to start to look at this stuff as a priority outside of legislation, so. So that's kind of my, my piece on it is air quality for our students. We have an obligation from the state to educate our kids and I think their quality of air at the school level is, should be top priority. And also.
Counsel Board Line, your time is up.
Thank you. And also the playing fields at the high school are way behind the curve. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to just throw in my two cents. There are reasons, I think, most, everything on here could have a priority in a certain sense. I also, I think HVAC is very important. While the last so many years, three to four from my memory, or even more than that, there have been grants provided by the state and I think it has, at least I have, I will speak for myself, I have asked, you know, the Board of Ed and them to continually apply for those grants and hoping that they would get a grant. Where I stand is, I think, I, I think the way it should, maybe we should do this is maybe pick three and then figure out where we go from there. My three would potentially be, number one would be the Main Street and No Inc. reconstruction. That is similar to what we did in Mystic. It was grant given to us by the state to redo all of that. I think that would change and bring in more, you know, a walkability, driving. It will change the main street of a community and I think that's a, a big necessity. I also think that the two HVACs, Charles Barnham and Fitch High School, which are probably the most expensive on the list, would also be a priority. I think you're right, Mr. Burt, that the Fitch Middle School, while it is judge of probate, which is shared by a whole community, a whole area around us, not just Groton, that's a need that we have here in Groton to help elevate that and bring it. There's a story to tell there, but I don't think we're ready potentially until we finish, they want to see us probably shovel-ready and I don't think we're quite there yet. There are other things on here that I could probably support, but I think those are my top three. Let's try and get, things that are going to help offset taxes, that's what I think for our, our community. And I also believe the governor has made, one of his priorities, clean airs in, in school, is one of his priorities that I've read. So I think that is something that is a potential for us to get. I would pick the 2.2 million for Northeast and Kalnowski. But I think we should try, like me personally, I think go for the two top expensive things of Charles Barnham and Fitch, as well as one item for the town, because that would be two for the school, one for the town. And don't forget that the Board of Education will also have a chance to get their legislative priorities as well. Counsel Board Line?
Um, yes. Yes, I was just looking at some of my notes from the No Inc. thing and seeing, you know, looking back, you know, that to me is kind of, could be something that could be handled very easily. But again, you know, I can't stress enough about the HVAC. And I can agree, yeah, those HVACs have been on quite some time on many boards before this. And I, I don't know, I guess the Town Manager, did we propose to them to fix those or what, what happened? I guess, I'm just trying to see from our end.
Say it for which item?
For the HVAC.
Well, they were working on grant funding and they didn't get all the necessary steps done to apply. So the ball's in their, has been in their court.
And when did the grants open for those originally?
Twenty-two, is that?
Twenty-two, twenty-two. And it finished up this last year.
Okay, all right, yeah. So, I mean, I, I don't know, how do you pick three on here really? I mean, it really, I mean, HVAC to me is almost like one cluster. I mean, Charles Barnham, Fitch, and CK. The culinary arts, my other question is, weren't they already seeking something for that? That's my other question.
I don't know if it, could you be potentially thinking of the, the theater work, the auditorium work they did?
No, I was thinking of the culinary arts because they were increasing, like needing more stoves and a bunch of other things were being added, so. Is this in addition or is this already been in the, in the works?
This is what they've been asking for. Last I heard, there's, they've not arrived at any funding.
Okay. I definitely can see that as a, definitely a story and a priority in the sense that, you know, we definitely need for pathways for our students in the sense that the, you know, not everybody's going to college and they need accessibility and career options. And I think that's kind of a lower hanging group, but I'm just not sure if that's already in the pipeline for a grant or funding. I'm not 100% sure. But again, it can't be their quality, I, I mean, it has to be done and I do think the No Inc. walkability is definitely an attractive item. Now, the planning and zoning, I guess through the mayor, through the Town Manager are for, I know I did attend or watched some of those meetings, they want to roll out that kind of accessibility is my understanding. The planning and zoning for No Inc.
Oh, yes, for, certainly.
Yeah. Because we don't have any jurisdiction over that, but this is something that's been vetted. This is not us wanting this, this is something they want, is that correct?
Correct, but it, they have their own zoning, but the building falls under us as well as the streets?
I'm sorry, they have their own zoning.
They have their own zoning, but building codes and enforcement, building codes and the cost of streets falls under the town.
Right, so, but they're, they make their decisions on when they want to, you know, move things along. So I, yeah, I think that is definitely of interest, so. We'll see what, where it goes and I think there's some items on here that just aren't even on this. But I, I do think, again, athletic fields at our high school level to keep us competitive with our neighboring communities and surrounding towns is also highly important. You know, the Fitch Field is got like basically a cavity in it because it needs to be filled in. Our, you know, field house is not adequate at all. Our bathrooms are deplorable and embarrassing for folks to use. Just, we're not meeting a lot of the ABA compliance and standards for our bleachers, so.
Thank you, your time has expired.
Thank you, there's a lot of work to be done up there and I just would think that should be considered. Thank you.
Mr. Burt?
Just a note on the field house. Now, I, my understanding is they've, originally the Board of Ed had asked somewhere around the 16 to 17 million range, which would be unlikely from the state, but if you renovate it, I think the costs are down, but I don't have, is that cost to put in here for a renovated version yet?
Yeah, I don't think the engineering has been done and Athletic Fields Task Force is working on pricing at this time. Counsel Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I have a few items in my head. Yes, the HVAC system and when we had the liaison meetings, that is when we found out that they had not completed the grant, so that was two years ago and I still have the notes because actually I took the notes at that meeting. So I know they didn't do the grant. The HVAC system, yes, but if the Board of Ed is asking for the money too, will we still have to put the funding in is my question. Main Street for me? And the air quality, but I did have a fourth one, which I mean, I'm going to throw, throw out there anyways. I still want to see about the, the Groton Lone Point Bridge over Amtrak because we don't know if we're going to have to pay for that or not. So we are going to have to have that money somewhere and we're supposed to pay it by next year, so. I'm going to throw the fourth out, item out there. Thank you.
You know, would it make sense to have three top priorities but a, a couple backups in case, you know, I, the Board of Ed says, we need more time to do better engineering? You know, some of these could drop off or the, the legislators could say, you, you have very little chance of this item getting funded, so it might make sense to have a couple backups to, to swap in there?
All right, thanks for that wrench.
Sorry.
All right, so let's.
Alright, so let's, let's, Council Parker still has the floor, sorry.
The reason why I say four is because of that, because I want to make sure that we're not double, it's not that we're double dipping, but the Board of Ed has to come up with their numbers too. Some of the stuff, we have tentative numbers and plans and stuff in place. So the ones that we have plans in place should be a priority, because we don't know what the current pricing for HVAC and the air quality system, unless that's a firm number, and we don't know that. Is that correct, Mr. Burt, through the mayor?
Yeah, that was their latest engineering number, but I know they've been discussing it since then.
Right, so-
I'll reach out to Sam Kilpatrick tomorrow.
So all this that we're coming up with is tentative, because the Board of Ed still has to go through their list and give us something, or so that we can be on a better playing field when we bring it to their attention? So we still have, can still have the discussion on December 3rd as an open item discussion. December 3rd, yes, because we need to present something on December 10th. Am I correct? Okay, so, again, HVAC, the air quality, Main Street, and I want the bridge. Just to be on the safe side, and if we have plans for something else, then we'll have to change the plan at that time. Okay, now I yield the floor.
Mayor, Mr. Burt?
I did check, the Board of Ed is gonna discuss on December 2nd their legislative priorities, so we would have it in time for the 3rd if we wanted to wrap things up. And I think there's probably a good chunk of these, we could just cross off already at this point.
Point of information?
Your question?
Do you, I guess my question, let me just make sure I'm phrasing it as a question here. HVAC systems, if we are looking to seek legislative approval for these, is it a joint effort that has to be with Board of Ed and Town Council in order for the funding? Or is it like just the Board of Ed puts it forward, but the town has to put up money? I mean, can you go into a little more detail on that?
Well, if, through bond program, you know, ideally, obviously, we would, if it's an education item, we'd probably want to match with what they're asking to maximize our chances. This is different than the grant funding. The grant funding was the town had to pay it upfront. First of those steps, the schools had to have some other legwork items done. And then, but with bonding, it would just be whatever they awarded. Now, the thing is, you could ask for 2.3 million for Charles Barnum, but they could say, "We award you 1.5 million, then we'll figure it out from there." But whatever they award you, they award you, it's, they're giving it to you. It's not like a, like the same as the grant.
So I guess my question, just to make sure I'm understanding, the town though would still have to pay for, or would the Board of Ed be paying for the difference?
That would be a discussion, if we received only parcel funding, that'd be a discussion item.
Okay, thank you for-
The hope would be we would get at least one item fully funded.
I guess my last bit of information.
Council Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, through the, through the mayor, through the town manager, when you talk about bond program, who's-
State bond commission.
It's a state bond, so it's no, it, we almost treat it like a grant. I mean, it's-
Yeah, yeah, for us, yeah.
They're just taking a bond to do these, some kind of a big school program or something all over the state.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so it's, for our end, it's just, here's the money.
Right, we just have to be very careful on the wording of it, because whatever gets passed, that's exactly what you, you know-
If we had asked for a grant thing and it did a bond-
Don't specify this type of, you know, furnace.
So if we said grant and it was bond, then we wouldn't get it, because we had said the wrong-
Well, it's just, the, the, the item is four. You just want to really think through exactly your wording on the-
In your, in the conversations you've had with our legislatures on the Groton-Lonpoint-Amtrak orphan bridge, have they felt positive, negative? Do they feeling they're going in a certain direction?
At this point, I think they're waiting to see what, we have Kate Rattan at the COG is looking for, if there's any other federal grants out there. So far, it's not been promising, but she's still looking. And then, you know, it'd be nice if we got a ruling from the DOT Commissioner that they were gonna waive it. It's a policy, it's not a law. But then barring that, let's say they refuse to waive it, we can't find any other grant dollars, then I think it, you know, it's a good idea to, you know, to put in for the-
Okay, alright, so my three, the No Inc. Main Street. I'm gonna say the Charles Barnum, it's the HVAC system, but if, that seems to be the one that, I mean, they desperately need it. So, if we're assigning it to a certain building, I'll put it there, but it's the HVAC.
Can I just say one thing, though? The only thing is, once we put that in, if we actually ask for the Amtrak right away, the DOT Commissioner will likely want to see then, "Oh, you might get money from this."
That's, I was just gonna-
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want to interrupt you-
We have two years until the, it might be, as I think it through, it might be better as a-
Are you saying one cancels the other? It's like they go, "Oh, you're getting the money, so you don't-"
Well, they might say, you know, "We're waiting for a decision on the waiver of it." Well, if they say we're trying for that money, they might just hold off and see if we get that money and, you know. Whereas I'd like to just, if they waived it, if they were gonna waive it, we could maybe get money for something else.
This is like a cat and mouse game.
The construction's in '26, so we might have another year to try for bond commission dollars. I could talk that through with the legislators further.
My third item, I just put the Paquonic Plains Park. It's the lowest item on here. They might be able to find some money under the state's sofas cushions. And also, it generates, it benefits a huge community of people that go there, so. There's a very, Council McBride, there's a very good story about that, so. So those are my, my three, and if we were doing a backup four, I guess it's the bridge, but I understand how you're kinda, you have to be careful how you approach it.
Yeah, and I'll talk to legislators about that.
Alright, I haven't started yet, so, okay. Yeah, I would try, I, me personally, I would try for different items, like something through the education, like the two HVACs. If we were gonna put a fourth one out, I would try for the park, although from what I understand, you're probably not gonna get a park through bond dollars. Odds are, you're not, it's not happening, because from what I'm understanding, they, they're not, the governor's not big on bonding for some of these things, so. Although we could push the ADA, but I'm not sure that they would do that. But the road reconstruction, I think, is a big one. And the GLP orphan bridge, I personally was gonna ask the same question. Can we wait another year and see if the state comes back with an answer first before we ask our legislators? Because if we are asking from two different sources, they might just sit back and wait for each other. So I don't think that's-
What I say about the Main Street is there is an economic development component, which the state typically likes.
That's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking, because it'll transform the whole area, so, like Mystic. So that's why I think that's, that's really big. So, let me just ask the council, and we can vote on this. We can vote on every single item on here and we just take majority? Whichever one has the most highest votes, and we take those and we whittle it down to where our top, just say, four are. Or I could ask everybody individually to just tell me your top four, and I'll write your name down next to each one. So. Would you like to go, the question I'm gonna ask the council, do you want to vote on each line item? All in favor? I don't hear anybody say yes. Would you like to list your top four?
Yes.
All in favor?
Yep, yes.
Okay, that sounds. Alright, Council Board of Line, would you please list your top four?
Yeah, so, do we have to say it like this? So HVAC is all individual versus-
Yeah, they are.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a concern, because I think they're all a priority. So I would do all the HVAC and No Inc. Thank you.
So I have you down for Charles Barnum, for Fitch, for Northeast Academy. And then you said No Inc., is that what you said? Council Board of Line, was your last item No Inc.? I didn't hear what your last item was.
It was No Inc., I haven't heard it.
Yeah, it was No Inc.
Thank you. Okay, Council Rusk?
I'm going to say No Inc., Charles Barnum, Northeast Academy. And I know you said they don't do parks, but I'm gonna say Paquonic Plains Park, because it is our only fully ADA compliant park.
Council Jones?
Charles Barnum, Paquonic Plains Park, No Inc. And my four, depending on the legislatures, is the Amtrak Bridge.
Council McBride?
I'm excluding HVAC, because I think that should go through the school construction process. My number one is Main Street, No Inc. Number two is Fitch Culinary. Number three is-
Hold on, hold on, I have to write these down, I gotta find them. So you want the bridge, you want No Inc.? Yeah?
No Inc., Culinary Arts, Paquonic Plains Park, and North Shore, Stonefin Bridge.
Orphan Bridge, No Inc., the Culinary Arts. And what else?
Paquonic Plains Park Playground.
Okay, Council Guyaskin?
Air Quality, No Inc., HVACs, CB over Fitch High.
Alright, so you want No Inc., Northeast Academy?
Yeah, Northeast Academy and CK, No Inc., then HVAC, CB before Fitch, because CB is cheaper.
Okay, there's your four. Council Parker?
HVAC, Northeast Academy, Main Street, and Groton-Lonpoint Bridge.
Alright, the bridge, No Inc., and Charles Barnum and Fitch, is that what you said?
And Northeast Academy. I want the air quality, the HVAC, Main Street, and Groton-Lonpoint. The HVAC, it doesn't matter to me which one goes first. Because they both have to be done. I need you to pick one. I'm gonna leave it as open.
You don't wanna-
No.
You're not gonna pick?
No.
I am. I am going to pick Charles Barnum, Fitch, No Inc.'s. And then I'm gonna try Paquonic Plains Park. Alright, so I have No Inc. has seven, that's our top number one item. Charles Barnum has five, that's our number two item. And then the next ones are tied. Fitch High School has four. And Paquonic Plains has four. Northeast Academy has three, Groton-Lonpoint Bridge has three, and the Fitch Culinary has one. So, Mr. Burt, you're saying your advice is to go with two or three, is that what you're saying? Or shall we stick with these four and wait till our next meeting?
I think four's perfect. Because I think more information will be, you know, available over, hopefully, over the next week.
Okay, alright, so that's-
Point of information?
Your question?
Would it make sense to put them all, obviously, because there might be some, when we present them, that they might strike right away and say, "Those are just not gonna happen and we should be ready for the others," or, I mean, I think we should have like a full vetted list.
Well, I have our- I have our list.
Response is gonna be from them, is that's my question. Should we have more of the better?
I have the list, and I also have items that have three and a one, so.
I guess my point of information might be the things that we think are three. My question is, they could think that those would be a one and easier to do, and so it might be more of a back and forth possibly, is my question.
We can have this discussion at our next meeting. Mr. Burt's gonna have more information for us and possibly talk to them.
Hopefully, yeah. I will reach out to the schools and I'll talk to the legislators.
Alright, on the next page is, staff recommends focusing on no more than two to three-
That was the last part, yeah.
Capital projects. And then below is a list of non-exhaustive list of legislative priorities to consider. On here is heating assistance, allow legal notices to be posted online rather than in print press, support funding for SCARA, solid waste disposal project, support increase in the state Medicaid ambulance reimbursement rate, state fund cleanup of Mystic Educational Center property, increased funding for mass transit to increase the coverage of C bus routes, support funding for TVCCA's proposed facility, and funding for Veterans Services. Alright. We shall look into such discussion. Council Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So are we picking three to four on this too?
I don't think there's really, I don't know if there's really hard limit on that, because you could support many, especially the legislative type of things, but it might be-
This one will, maybe we should vote on each one, and then if there's additional items, we can add it to the list, because it sounds like Council McBride came with a list. So we might be able to add things to the list, and we could vote on every one and see who gets the most votes. And if, let's just say they're over five, if you got over five votes, it's a council priority. So we could do it that way if you'd like.
Okay.
Do you have anything? Anymore?
Well, I was just gonna tell you which ones mine, mine were, because-
We can do the vote if you'd like.
Yeah.
Okay, you won't, you can share what you'd like, that's fine.
Definitely, I'm looking for TVCCA, on the heating assistance, veterans, and the C plus. I am not worried about Mystic Education Center property, because it's not our property. And I'd rather not, us not ask for it, because it's state property. Two cents. Thank you. I'm done.
Alright, thanks. Council Rusk?
So just one of the things that we brought up in here was the support for the increase of state Medicaid ambulance reimbursement rate. I know it hasn't come before, the full council is still at the committee level, but what we've learned at the committee level is that the state Medicare rate reimbursement is lower than even the federal government rate for reimbursement. And because we have so many residents who are either on Medicare, Medicaid, or on TRICARE, all of those rates are significantly lower, which means our tax dollars are turning around to fund the remainder of that, because we have to have ambulances paid for in our community. So if the state raised those rates, it would, obviously, it's all still taxpayer dollars, but it would be a larger base of taxpayers, not just Groton residents who would be paying those rates to reimburse the rest of it. So I am very much in support of increase in state Medicaid ambulance reimbursement rate, something that is not on here, that is near and dear to my heart, or school meals for all. And I know that is something that our state legislators do support, but I think it is worth reinstating. Funding Veterans Services, I don't, I think I need a little bit more information on what that exactly looks like. Obviously, I support our veterans 100 percent. My husband's a veteran. And I think it's important that we support our veterans, especially in a community where we have so many veterans. But I would want to know what that looks like before we move forward on that. And heating assistance, we are going into a season where the need is huge. And so definitely, I support that, but in all honesty, there's so much on here that I support, and it's hard to prioritize. But those are kind of my, my thoughts for now.
Thank you. I will let you know that, at least on the Veterans Services, from what I'm seeing on here, it's a state unfunded mandate for us to have somebody in our community that helps veterans try and apply for their, you know-
Their services?
Their services that they're entitled to. So it's a state unfunded mandate, and there's a lot more coming that- And there's a lot more coming that will come to our council in the near future. But to ask them to put some kind of funding to it would be, would be nice as well. Counselor Bordaline.
Thanks. I too, like Counselor Ross, have meals for all. It's something very important to me as well. It is something that, gosh, I've been asking for quite some time. Since my days on the education committee in the RTM. And, you know, we see a need for that. We saw it during COVID when folks were, you know, when the limits were when they were more relaxed. So I definitely think meals for all is definitely focused and a priority. And I know it's depending on, you know, what schools are at what levels, but I think across the board, Groton should be. For me, I think it's kind of hard to pick any of these. Obviously, heating assistance is obviously very important. I think for this, again, it's kind of, in my opinion, kind of more organic in nature when selecting. Some of these might be initiatives that the legislative might say back to us that they're already working on. And so it's like, maybe not need to be our top three, then we can move to our top four or five. So it'll be interesting. I think that's when open dialogue has to occur, but I guess it's good to come in with a few ideas. But I know meals have been discussed before. Heating assistance has been discussed before. TVCCA has been discussed before. And I can agree with all of those and just about everything on here. But I think it's waiting to see what the dialogue is with the legislative to see. They might have some updates on some of these where we don't really have to pick the top three because they're already being, they're already moving on. So then I wouldn't want to pick that one as one of my top three if it's already being worked on. So, I mean, sky's the limits. I also think we need more thing for housing assistance. Some programs I saw out there where towns could put in implementation to help people that are dislocated from housing. And we can have funding. I know we have something set up to help people like with home repairs. Well, we have to make sure people can get to homeownership. Some people can't even afford the rent. So we got to go more granular and grassroots, and we need more assistance to help folks offset the cost and affordability of housing. People are being maxed out of Groton. So that's something that I'm very concerned with. But again, there's sky's limits on here. Meals, TVCCA, heating. I think rental assistance is a concern. Thank you.
Counselor McBride.
Thank you. I think, I kind of agree with some of the earlier comments, and I think we list everything. And give it, maybe give it to them before, and they come forward and explain where everything stands as opposed to just having three or four because there are legislators and we need to give them, in my opinion, every bit of information that we have concerns over and what we're desiring. In addition to all those things that I support, I also think we need to add to it what we talked about earlier, which was the HVAC for schools in the 2025 legislative agenda to put money into the DAS school construction project. We just put forth 9.5 million of our priorities. If that was to go under school construction, it would be much easier for us to afford that. So that would be one of my top ones. I also think, and I'm going to throw this out there, but don't throw any pens at me. I think we need to discuss the regional stormwater once again. That came up from last year. I think it's something that should be discussed. And as I mentioned before, there's supposedly money that's available in the Bond Commission for starting that, so I would like to hear that. I also think there's discussion on increasing funds for special education that needs to be, that needs to go into effect. That would not modify the MBR, so that would make some changes going forward. I also think we should discuss, there's some proposals for putting forth where municipalities are going to receive some of the sales tax that are, that are being collected in their municipalities. So like 1% of the sales tax, let's say in Mystic, could come back to the town. That's something that I'd like to see discussed. Also increase in the pilot. As we all know, the pilot law changes, and we, we lose a lot of money as a result of all the non-taxable property, so I think there should be an adjustment to pilot being increased like there was two years ago. And I can't read my handwriting. Oh. Looking at additional funding to cover some of the increased costs that municipalities are burdened with because the increased costs associated with the additional days required for the election. As we all know, that was an extremely busy period. I'm assuming it's going to be busier and costlier in the future, so I think that legislature should be discussed. Couple others, but I'll save that for another day. Thank you.
You can't save them for another day. There is no other day. This is your chance.
Cookies for everything. Okay, I'll go for it. I guess this question is for Town Manager Burt. My understanding is the recent legislation, legislature that was passed last year for the property tax exempt for disabled veterans allowed all veterans, even if they were 30% impaired or whatever it may be. That's collecting, that's causing a significant amount of cost to municipalities that there's discussion now to change that to be 100% disabled versus the way it's set up. I'm not sure if you know anything about that or if that is costing Groton a lot of money.
It's still being fought out a little bit on what it really means. There's some difference on who qualifies from the list the VA provided to the legislators versus what people have registered in the assessor's office under this. And the difference being, so it's still, we need some more clarification.
But. Well, I did speak to Chris Conley yesterday, and it is 100% totally disabled gets the discount. Where people are coming up with a 30 or 50% does not count. That's, that's different, a different bill.
Well, I know in another municipality, we received letters giving them tax exemption, and we have residents that are claiming they get 100% tax exemption. So the VA sent them letters, and we have, I'm not sure whether confusion, and that's why I didn't know if I should bring it up, so maybe it's.
But there is still a difference of the VA listed a certain number, and people have come in for 100% and claimed it over the years with proof that's higher than what the VA says. So there is a difference still with the 100% that needs to be figured out. But the kind of, the type of numbers we're talking about is, I think, the VA numbers is in the $135,000 range we would that they would equate to for those versus in the high, just a little under $200,000. So that's kind of the range we're talking about with the numbers we have.
Maybe that's not an item for next week then.
Well, I will say the list also had Mystic listed.
What's that?
The list had Groton, and it did have Mystic. So I don't know if some of those people listed in Mystic were part of Groton.
We know though, our database has a certain, has more than what the VA says for Groton proper, so throughout all the town.
Okay, but that is a discussion that we could ask them about and what their intent was because they can probably clarify for you.
That sounds good.
What else you got?
I have one more, but I only have three seconds, so I can't talk about it.
You have a whole nother round.
Okay. One other item, this is kind of out of the beaten path, but after the election, there were eight states that put forth constitutional amendments that revised the property tax system, most specifically one was Georgia. And they instituted a new law that only allowed for a municipality to increase its property tax by a certain percentage cost of living adjustment. So I wanted to ask them if there's any discussion at the state as to whether or not that's being discussed or moving forward, because that could change a lot in the future if legislation's passed to do that. So that was the.
Is that a question? You just want to ask them and get an answer? You don't want us to vote on that as a priority?
Just more, that was a discussion to talk to them about.
Anything else? Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the mayor to the town manager. We have legal notices posted online rather than printed press. Is that a big thing, little thing? I don't.
It comes up from CCM as a, as one of, typically every year is one of their issues to ask.
Is it?
You know, because there's less and less people that get their news from the actual newspaper. It's not a big priority to me, you know. It is a cost savings. Not have to do that, but you're probably knocking maybe a few thousand dollars.
Okay, but it's something that the town manages. Okay, I just didn't know if this was a big problem. I mean, we still have a newspaper, so until we don't have a newspaper, then it's a big problem. All right, so I think my, just so I agree, all of these are important, and we'll see what they talk about, but funding for veteran services. Support funding for TVCCA proposed facilities, is that something that the state would normally support?
I missed that say.
The, the TVCCA proposed, is that something the state normally would support, like a grant or something?
Well, they've been regularly applying for bond commission dollars themselves.
Okay.
So usually, I think we've written letters to support for that in the past.
It's kind of a support.
Support it.
Okay, so that's, that, okay, that item's fine. I know with our ambulances, the, one of the reasons they get into so much trouble is the reimbursement and non-payment of bills. So I think that's, if that, I didn't even know that they, the state paid less than the federal government, so it would be nice to have that equalized. Heating assistance would be my fourth.
May I interject? I think what we're going to do is we're going to go through each one of these, and we can vote on them. If you think it's a priority that's important to you, you can say yes. And if every one of these gets over five votes, we can say, these are the things we support. Because this isn't like a priority list. This is like what we're supporting. But if they go and fight for it at the state level, we're saying we support you on that. We're backing you, and we would like you to fight for these type of things. So I'll, I'll call them out, and if it gets over five votes, then we say, here's our list of things that we think are important to us as a body, and I don't think there has to be any minimums. It could be 10 things. It could be 15. Because if they go to the state and they're on a committee and they're, they're working on these things, and they say, you know what, Groton said they're in favor of this. So I have my town of Groton, you know, council that backs me on this. I'm probably going to fight for this more.
So we vote for four?
No. We're going to go through the whole list, and if you like it, and you think you want them to fight for it at the state, because this is not a priority list like our CIP, so we're just asking for a few things. This one, we can say, we want what, everything. We want, I don't want that. I don't like that, so I'm not going to put my hand up. But if you like it, you can put your hand up because you want them to fight for it. Because this is legislative. This is different than like trying to get bonding money.
Give us anything back. They're just fighting for stuff.
Yeah, so if you want them to fight for this, and you think it's a priority of yours, then I think that's what you should put your hand up for. Counselor Gajewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to add two things potentially to the list. I do like Counselor McBride's sales tax idea about the 1% coming back to towns. And then school meals for all. I agree with many of my colleagues who have said that with that. Another thing is, I would like is surely shoreline east expansion into Groton potentially. Getting workers to EB with the increase in workforce there. Individuals having a rough time finding housing. I think, you know, getting a stop right here in Groton would ease traffic congestion and also ease our need for housing as, you know, people are coming in through a different source. And then subsidies, kind of expanding on housing subsidies for the development of private properties to develop for housing. I think it could help with our need. And then also, I am in favor of heating assistance, the ambulances, and vests as stated earlier. But I'll have my. Top priorities, I'm going to do that. That's it.
Okay, but you did understand like you could vote for, you could vote for 15 things on here.
Yeah.
And if they get over five votes, that basically makes the list. Counselor Bordaline.
Yeah, I forgot to add on one of mine was the environmental initiatives and climate change stuff as well. I think that's very vital, being a coastal community with the sea level rise and the warming climates. I think that is a priority. Also.
Can you be specific so I can, like, so we can tell them exactly what it is?
Just climate change in general. It's fine. Initiatives, that, that could be any, I mean, if they want to plant trees, if they want to help with, you know, coastal flooding. I mean, basically climate initiatives, coastal climate initiatives in general.
Okay.
Also, this is something I brought up a while ago. Back when I was on the RTM, when we found the lead in the water at Fitch Middle School and the field house and things like that. Also, quality drinking water. It's, you know, it's, it's amazing to me that we have people that still are drinking water with what are considered legal limits of lead, and I think the legal limit of lead should be zero. And, and some of our facilities still have lead in them, but they're at the legal limit. I don't know if they've been retested, but I think that there should be some, I know the state level is starting to look at this, and there were, were some initiatives where towns could help homeowners and town with the piping. I think that is a huge health and wellness issue, quality, clean drinking water, so.
Is that, you're all set?
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Ress.
Thank you. I just wanted to touch on something that Counselor Jones stated with the legal notices online. During COVID, I know notices were allowed to be online. It doesn't save a ton of money, but it saves money. And in reality, there's not that many people who go on the newspaper to look for for legal notices. And I honestly Googled legal notices in the day and could not find them. And I am a subscriber to the day. So I think that that is something that is a no-brainer at this point. It's been proven that it can be done. It saves taxpayer dollars, and it is far more convenient than going into a newspaper. I realize it will take money away from newspapers. I'm going to, you know, say that. I understand that. But for a municipality to have to pay for those is, seems a bit out of date.
I'd just add on that you're exactly right. We haven't been able to pull them up from the website, so we have them send us a copy of it. Because otherwise, we have to go out and buy a hard copy of it.
Yes.
For our records.
Point of information?
Your question?
How do you reach the population of folks who do not use technology still? That's my only concern. How else would we post it if we, if we eliminate it? That's, but I agree with elimination. I just am worried. There is a strong population that do not have or use electronics. Some people in their late 70s and even 80s, 90s, they don't use it.
Well, what we could do, one suggestion is we, we're going to continue to create the legal notices. It's just where does it go? We can also post to places like the library, senior center, that type of thing. Our bulletin board for legal notices.
Okay, thank you.
Like the town, like our meetings, they have to be posted on the board at the town clerk's office.
Yeah, certainly, we'd have something in town.
That's probably like, at least legally, you could say town clerk and online.
Thank you for clarifying that. I just want to make sure we're not boxing out a portion of our community.
All right, I think these are a lot of great additions to the list. What I want to ask our legislators is that I think there's going to be a lot of changes on the federal level, which will trickle down to the states, which will trickle down, down to us on the local level. So I would like to ask our legislators to actually come visit us more often and give us updates because we need to know what they're doing at the state that's going to affect us locally, and we need to know, you know, pretty regularly what's happening because I think there's going to be some changes coming. So I'm adding that to the list as well, that they come visit us a little bit more regularly than once a year just to find out our priorities. Would rather give us some updates. All right. So is there anybody that doesn't understand how we're going to do this? We're going to vote on every item. If it gets more than five people supporting it, it becomes something that we tell our legislators that we think this is important to us and that we support it and that we would, we would back them up at the state. I guess basically fighting for it. All right, so there's no like just the top four. It's going to be whatever gets over like five or more votes because that's majority. All right, so heating assistance. Everybody in favor, raise your hand. Counselor Bordaline?
Yeah, four.
Okay, so that's seven. Allow legal notices to be posted online rather than in printed press.
Point of information?
Your question?
You just add that they would be also posted as a way that we stated because I just don't want to box out a portion of our community. It just needs, I think that should be in there.
Well, this isn't going to be our, I mean, I could put it in there, but it's not going to be our legislation. It will be their legislation.
Right, and I, I'm just saying for me to support it publicly, I want to make sure it's actually going to be posted elsewhere because there are, a large percent of our population don't use electronics.
All right, and I'll say. All right, and I'll say, and post it at the town hall.
That's fair.
Okay? Like the town clerk posts our meetings.
And then we could choose to do more on top of that.
All right, everybody in favor of that?
In favor.
All right, that has seven. Support funding for SCARA's solid waste disposal project. All right, we got two on that one. Support increase in the state Medicaid ambulance reimbursement rate. All right, we got seven on that one. State fund cleanup of Mystic Education Center property.
I support, I mean, I guess what we're trying to say, for development or for the safety of our waterway and environment, because it is running off on a hill into our waterway. So I guess, what do we, what does that mean?
I think it's whatever you want it to mean.
I think, I think it should be cleaned up. I think it's, it's a brownfield, it should be a priority. We should be making the state clean up a brownfield in our community that's affecting our health. As far as the development of it, that's a whole different topic, but from cleaning it up so that it's safe for the neighbors, absolutely.
So you vote in favor of it?
For cleaning it up, as a blanket statement, yes.
All right. Oh, that's, are you raising your hand or are you voting?
No, no vote.
Right, there's two of those.
Point of information?
Your question?
I feel like I need more information on that before I can make it a priority or not. So can we get a little bit more information on that and an email sent to us, like concerns about it?
Oh, for the environmental concerns?
Yes.
Yeah, I can pull up some, please.
Thank you.
Increase funding for mass transit to increase the coverage of seat bus routes.
Yes.
All right, we got seven on that one. Support funding for TVCCA's proposed facility.
Yes.
We have seven on that one. Funding for Veterans Services, which is a state unfunded mandate.
Yes.
We have seven on that one. School meals for all.
Yes.
Seven for that one. Housing assistance.
Yes.
We have seven on that one. All right, this one gets me a little confused. We have HVAC slash schools construction. I'm not really sure.
Recreate the program, to reestablish it funding.
Recreate the HVAC program?
Yes, put money in DAS under the school construction program to fund, as they did in 2022.
HVAC DAS funding.
I support it.
Again. Okay. We are voting on HVAC DAS funding again. All right, that's seven. Regional stormwater. Raise it high.
I'll support it.
We got two.
I will say eventually, I think we're going to have to take a closer look at it. If, if we're going to start seeing the actual cost of things, it's something we at least have to look.
Then we're cutting somewhere else, then we're cutting somewhere else.
The water's around our ankles, well, it'll be too late then. It'll be too late. Too late, then you're going to have to go tax the residents, wouldn't you?
Then we're taxing the residents.
All right, special education money. What, what did you say specifically about that? Because you, I'm sorry, Counselor McBride, but you do speak very fast.
Really just increasing the funds for special education. They're not fully allotted the proper amount, so it's costing the Department of Ed's a lot more money, because they have to fund those special education costs. However, the real caveat is, when the additional money comes into for special education, to not have that money go towards the MBR.
All right.
I could read if you want. The COG actually put that under their priorities, you know, they spent some time on this wordiness, if you want to hear what it says.
Okay, so we're voting on special education money, not to the MBR. Well, additional.
Additionals.
Additional.
No, unfortunately, it would be excluded from.
Non-MBR.
Counselor Gieske, you voted on that?
Oh, yes, yes.
Counselor Bordelain?
Yeah, I heard you said yes.
Point of information?
Your question? Counselor Rusk?
Can that information be sent to us as well, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Point of, could the whole-
Counselor Gieske?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Could the whole-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Counselor Parker, I skipped right over you. I am so sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I apologize, Counselor Parker. I forgot. I thought your question was someone. My apologies. Could you send the whole SCAG, good, yeah, goals, please, as well?
Counselor Parker.
It's matched up pretty well with what we're looking at on a lot of these.
Could we remind everyone that it is now 10:03 and we're supposed to vote on continuing?
Sure can. Everybody in favor of continuing our meeting? I, I, okay, we have majority. Okay, sales tax from local towns, 1% sales tax from local towns. Give them back to the community.
Can we turn back to?
Return back to the community.
Yes.
All right, seven. All right, fully fund pilot funding. Counselor Bordelain? Yeah? That's seven. Increase, increased funding for election costs from the state, the local municipalities. That's a seven. Shoreline east into Groton.
Yes.
That has six. Private property housing subsidies.
Say that again?
Private property housing subsidies to build more housing. That's what you said, Counselor McBride, right?
No, that was-
I mean, Counselor-
Subsidies for housing development, so like to encourage housing development.
Like what they do if it's near a train depot.
Yeah.
Things like that, they give extra money.
Yeah.
Because you're building an extra train depot for transportation. Private property housing subsidies. Counselor Bordelain? Counselor Bordelain, I can't hear you.
Yeah, I didn't say anything.
All right, so then that's six. Climate change initiatives.
Yes.
All right, that has four. Quality drinking water.
Yes.
I'm down with quality drinking water, though. That has six. Do you have a point of information?
I'll leave it alone, go ahead.
Okay. And then-
I have a point of information, I'm sorry.
Your question?
Do we have concerns with our drinking water in Groton to the point that it wants to, it should be one of our priorities?
It's not saying it's our priority, but that we support it, and that if they have to, they can do something about it, they can, we back it.
Okay.
It's one of those things.
Sure.
Is that for funding for initiatives, and is there a component for-
Just as quality drinking-
Zeroing out, you know, to acceptable level?
It's just as quality drinking water.
It's all of it, John. I mean, there's a lot of state initiatives for clearing out lead and making sure municipalities aren't funding the burden of upgrading some of these systems, as well as helping homeowners.
Okay, and then asking our legislators to come back and visit us with updates, especially with federal changes in the future more often.
Yep.
Yes.
All right, that has seven. You get all that, John?
Yeah, I got it.
Counselor McBride?
Just a point of clear, or a question. I had rental assistance too, or was that in something else?
Housing.
I think it was mixed a little bit.
Housing, okay. All right, thank you.
Let me see, did I miss something? Let me make sure I got it. Yeah, I put housing assistance. That was like up here.
So rental falls within the housing.
Yeah.
Point of information?
Yes?
What was the item about property tax? I can't remember who said it.
Counselor McBride? You wanted an update on whether the state's looking or considering things-
Yeah, I was just going to discuss it, because it wasn't a priority of ours.
It was not, okay.
Yeah, not a-
I could send that question to legislators and answer it prepared for them.
Thank you.
The 1% sales tax to local municipalities, is that the one? That has seven votes.
No, no, no.
No, no, question. Property tax reform, increasing-
Oh, in Georgia?
A certain amount. Georgia was an example of it, passed the amendment.
Massachusetts has a prop to an app. Thank you. You can't, I've had it for years, decades, actually.
All right, so question, you're off topic now. All right, let's, all right, so we'll get that list combined. We have our priorities for the financial, you know, the monetary ones, and then we'll come back on the December 3rd town council meeting, but we will make it a, I don't know if we're making it a special cow or what we're doing, but-
You can do it in council, there's no restriction on that.
Okay, that's fine. All righty. Very nice, everybody, moving on. Now we have the town ABC training requirements. Up next, Counselor Rusk, would you like to take that motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Item 2024-987, Town ABC Training Requirements. Motion to recommend a resolution requiring newly appointed and reappointed members of town, of the town agencies, committees, and councils, ABCs, receive training in Robert's Rules of Order and the Connecticut Freedom of Information Act prior to being sworn in by the town clerk for new appointees and for reappointees that have not previously received the training prior to the start of their new term. To authorize the town manager, in consultation with the town clerk, to establish the training program, chairs of the town ABC will be, ABCs will be required to follow Robert's Rules of Order when conducting meetings. Additionally, failure of ABC members to follow Robert's Rules of Order or the Freedom of Information Act may be considered grounds for removal from the ABC.
Second, moved by Rusk, seconded by Parker. Mr. Burt, would you like to sort of give a little synopsis on how you think this might work out and how the town would take care of this?
Sure, you know, I need to talk further with the town clerk, but we would, we would likely, I want to talk to a little, I want to talk to HR and, and the town clerk on ideas. Most likely, it's going to be some short videotape, you know, watching, some short videotape thing. There could be incorporated a small quiz to show that it's been watched, but it's going to be something along those lines, I'm sure.
Okay.
You know, it could be monitored with just the video where you know they've watched it, or if it was on their own, you could do the quiz, and even if they're looking at the answers, they learn something, then.
Right, understood. And this would protect the town, potential lawsuits-
Sure.
From violations, and as well as following Robert's Rules of Order, bring, is supposed to bring stability to meetings, and so, and it should also be equality for all on the board. All right, so Counselor Gieske.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. A quick question. So my understanding of this rule is, an individual would not be allowed to participate in the ABC if they did not go through the training, is that correct?
Correct.
And then my second to last question is, what are the grounds for removal from an ABC currently?
Well, it said in charter right out, basically, really, it's anything inappropriate, but it requires a public hearing first. None of that would change. If you, if you want, can I, give me a sec, I could pull up what the charter says.
You could just tell me the charter rule, I could look at it myself.
Well, you opened that can of worms, now Mr. Burt's going to go look for it.
I need new glasses.
Chapter, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Chapter eight. Removals on page 14 of our-
I got it. I can read it in the record. I'll take the floor back. Removal is 8-1-5-1. A regular or alternate member of any appointed ABC may be removed for cause by at least seven votes of the council or by the town manager as appropriate appointing authority. Just cause may include, one, failure to attend at least 60% of the regular meetings without reasonable explanation during any calendar year; two, failure to comply with the duties and obligations imposed by local, state, or federal law; three, violation of the town Code of Ethics, if such exists. 8-5-2, no member of an alternate or of any ABC shall be removed until he or she has been notified by certified mail and with a written statement increased why or he or she should be removed. Proof of mailing shall be considered adequate notification. Not sooner than four weeks after mailing, the council or town manager shall convene a public hearing at which the regular or alternate member may appear with council. Not later than three weeks after the close of said public hearing, the council shall vote, or the town manager as appropriate shall take action to remove the member. 8-1-5-3, any regular or alternate member who has been removed from an ABC shall be ineligible to be a regular or alternate member of any agency, authority, board, commission, or committee for a period of not less than one year.
Just to mention, the reason I mentioned me is, I appoint to the Economic Development Commission and the Conservation Commission.
Fascinating.
Yeah, so it's a very involved process, which is making it clear you do expect these, that this rule will be followed.
Do you have any further questions?
No, I am back.
Thank you. Counselor Bordelain?
So this is just, if you don't take the, like, I've done it like several times now, you don't, you don't take the training or whatever?
Yes. To make sure people understand the laws and how to conduct themselves.
But then it says, so then after that, though, then it goes to this whole other jargon about, anyway, so what would due process look like? So they take this training, you know, sometimes it's considered very, it's interpretive, right? Like, others may feel that they're being targeted in ways or treated unfairly, but others may not see it that way, but when others may, you know? So who's the final say on that? I mean, what's the due process outside of the whole taking? And why do we, who, whose referral was this, by the way?
The mayor's.
Oh, the mayor's, okay. Did they get the three votes for this?
Yes.
Okay, because I don't remember seeing this one, that's why I'm asking. So I just don't know why now, all of a sudden, like, I mean, has there been a problem on ABCs that we need this? I mean, because they're all volunteers, so I guess, you know, usually things don't just come out of the wind or the sky. Usually, things like this tend to happen when there's, you know, usually, you know, you change something, right? You learn from something. So my question is, kind of, where is it coming from? Where's the backstory? And if this is the motion we're going to move towards, to object people, volunteers that we can't even fill all of our ABCs, what is the concerns that we're having? And what does that due process look like? Because, you know, it can't be just, mm, I didn't like that person or what they said. Who's going to be the final say on that? Because interpretation is one thing, what one feels like, like, I talk very loud. That's just the way I talk. As soon as I say, you know, as soon as I say something, people might think that that's yelling. I, that's the way I talk. Others say things certain ways that I find offensive. You know, everyone is open to interpretation. So I guess, when we try to go down this path, we have to be very clean and clear as to how we're enforcing that and who, who's going to be doing that. So it'll be very interesting to see as this, if this is something, obviously, it's got the support, it wouldn't be on here. But it, if it moves forward, it'll be interesting to see how it rolls out. And we have to be very cognizant of how it's being used and who it's being used against. You know, like I called out at one of the town council meetings, council stood up, banged on the counter. If I had done it, it would have been court of order, decorum. Not one person called a thing. So interpretation is a big catalyst to this, and the way people perception, and the way people are treated, even the way people are called on, when their, you know, their turn is up.
Thank you, Counselor Bordelain, your time has expired.
Thank you, or when their time is ended, you know, how it's stated. So I think it's going to be important to see how this rolls out. But thank you. Any backstory would be helpful.
I was just going to mention, this does not change the charter process. As it is without this in place, let's say someone was not following FOIA on a committee, any councilor can make a referral, get the number of, to support and start the process. process. This does not change anything on that, it's just making it clear you're expected to follow it.
Point of information.
Your question?
Um, how would you know someone's not, because like, you know, someone can say they, they heard from somebody, how do you fact check that?
You watch the meeting.
You watch the meeting, but I mean, if someone says, if someone told me about this, how do we?
Your point of order, Council Gieske?
The, the point of information was answered, and then Council Boarderline was not recognized for a second point of information, so.
I agree, thank you.
Point of information.
Your question?
I, I didn't know we were quantifying it, I do apologize, I thought it was wrapped all the one, I buy apologies, Council Gieske.
Are you using your time? Are you using your second turn?
No, I'm just saying, no, I'm asking my point of information, I ask for fairness and, you know, due process.
You're talking to Council Gieske, please make your comments through me.
So I can't thank him for clarifying that? Okay, so my question is, how would one quantify a FOIA if it's word of mouth, someone said, this person said something? How do you fact check?
Council Boarderline, these are not just simple questions, I think this is something that you should use on your turn.
Well, he just, he just said FOIA would be.
I would say you should use that as a question when it's your turn to speak.
Thank you. I hope everyone gets this in terms of they ask.
Council Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, we are all volunteers, we're elected, some of us are elected, some of us are appointed to committees. We are to follow the rules from the Freedom of Information Act, which is state law that you need to follow. So if the person is not following those correctly, then they need to be, I'm going to say sanctioned, for a better word, for a better word. If they're told that they're violating something and they continue violating the meeting minutes and posting and not clearly writing out their minutes, there are certain steps that have to be done, the same steps that we do here at the meetings, that other committees, commissions across the state use this information. So, if we are not enforcing that, we are setting ourselves up for failure as a group, committee to get forth items that need to be sent out and done and completed. Not only that, we're failed, being a failure at not enforcing the law that is prescribed to us through the state statutes. So if we're not following that ourselves, then there's a problem. We cannot conduct business that way. So if a person, as pointed out, if someone hears about something or sees it, watching the meeting, if they're in person, they can send a complaint in and we will follow up on it, which is clearly stated in our town charter. So we are supposed to follow what's in our federal level, state level, city charter or town charter, and then any rules that have been applied in the group. So if those rules are not applied correctly, then people need to be sanctioned for it. So my two cents is everybody needs to take the training so that everybody knows what they're supposed to do correctly, so we do not end up in a lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Russ?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would, I support this, but the main thing that I support in this is the fact that we are now going to be training people, and that training has not been provided in the past. And I think it's really important that we, as a municipality, choose to be proactive, provide training for everybody. The last couple words are already in the charter, it, nothing really changes with that. If you're not following the rules set forth, there are already ways that people can be removed. Hopefully that never happens, like, that's not the goal of this. The goal of this really is to train people, to ensure that we are doing the work of the community, whether we're appointed or elected, that we're doing right by the community and by the laws. So I'm in support of this, and I hope that the end, I've never known somebody to be removed per the charter. I don't see it happening immediately, like, I'm not seeing that as a concern with this. So I support training people as much as we can, so that's my feeling on this.
Thank you. Council Boarderline?
Yeah, no, I can agree with Councilor Russ, you know, I, training is one thing, and it's always been offered, but if there's already governing rules or whatever from the charter, then why are we adding it in this? So I guess, I just don't, if that already exists, why are we adding it in? If there's a problem, well then, let's rear the problem, like, I mean, have those people been offered any training or support or counsel? Again, if it's just training, we wouldn't have to write this up, just offer the training. But if there's a problem, and we're making a whole, like, rule out of this now, that's a, that's a different story. Maybe there's something going on that I'm not aware of, I haven't watched all the ABCs, I guess I'll have to start watching. But if there's already stuff to remove somebody, then, then make this just about training that. I think this just implies other things, I don't, I don't know what we're getting at. And again, like I was saying before, my question that I wasn't allowed to answer, talk, I'll talk now, you know, so one person can say, anybody can say anything. I can, so, anyone can send a complaint and say, we heard this. Who's fact checking? What would the due process be? I guess that's my question. Word of mouth is not the holy grail, it's, it's just someone saying something. So if you don't have the hard evidence in an email or anything else, we have to be very careful about hearsay or personal attacks because someone may not like somebody putting in a false complaint. We heard so-and-so say from so-and-so that so-and-so brought this up, or this came up, and, you know, that was an FOI complaint. How, how are we going to validate that under this?
Mr. Burt, you want to answer that one?
I was just going to say, this doesn't change anything, the charter lays out exactly what happens. It's up to the seven members to decide, the seven, seven out of nine must decide that, yes, that is an issue worthy of removing. This doesn't change that, and we can't change that, that's the charter. It's, it's up to individual, it becomes a referral at the council, and the council can decide how they want to handle it, or could give direction on it, but we can't write anything contrary to the charter.
So like hearsay, then, would just be hearsay, so it wouldn't be something that you won't rule on, like, you had, you know, hard evidence on, it'd be like anything, anybody can say anything. Anybody can watch a meeting and say, you know, interpretation is, is so vague and, and single pointed, so.
That's how it already is, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, that's how it already is set up, that way, this doesn't turn that.
Right, so, yeah, I just don't, I just don't know that this is, I can support training, but I think all the rest of this, it just, I don't, if the charter already has it, then why are we, what's up with the redundancy? So I'd like to make an amended motion that we, everything in here stated that we offer the training as required, I don't think we need all the rest of it, then, there's really nothing else. I mean, I haven't been brought into any other, you know, meetings or anything where there's been a problem, and we already have a charter that supports it, so my motion would be.
Council Boarderline, you don't have a second.
To offer training, that would be my motion.
You don't have a second.
That's fine, I'm not sorry.
Point of order.
Council Parker, your point of order?
The sidebar, sidebar comment is inappropriate and deplorable.
Can you specifically say what sidebar comment?
It doesn't surprise me, the last comment made.
Thank you, I would agree. Council Boarderline, you have 15 seconds remaining.
I'm all set, thank you.
Council McBride?
Thank you, I'm, I'm in support of this, and I kind of agree with Council Russ and Portia, Council Boarderline about training, I think it's important, I'm a big believer in Japanese term kaizen, which means continuous improvement, if we can make these, everyone better, I think it's worth, worthy of additional training, so I'm in support of it. My question I have, though, is, why are we only requiring newly appointed and not all members?
Well, it's also reappointments, as they come up, it's just a way to flag it when it's new members and if you're getting reappointed.
So we don't want to require every member to have this training?
If that's what the council wants.
I guess it's a question from the council, because if it's that important.
But they're already sworn in, so it's a little, you know, it's kind of, the point is to do it before they get sworn in.
That's what I was just going to mention, it's much easier to do it before you're actually sworn in, you won't get the oath until you do the training.
And just like, we've, we, you know, we've did really well on the harassment, sexual harassment training, however, we didn't get everybody, and they're already on, and there's nothing, you know, you do it before they get sworn in.
Okay, my other question is, training, and I understand you said it's going to be a video and so forth, I just, I'm going to support it either way, but it would have been nice if, if we could delay this until we actually saw the training segment, and we were approving something that we know what, what the training encompasses. Like, right now, we're just approving a training plan, but we don't even know what the plan is, so.
It's going to be, like, you can watch a video, an hour on Robert's rules, an hour on FOIA, like, just like the training, like, you have FOI training from the, from the attorneys, it's going to be just like that. I, I think that'd be a bit of overreach to get into the weeds of that.
Okay, well, my initial, before you explained that earlier, was, was, were we going to have attorneys come out and give?
Very simple.
So the cost, the cost to the taxpayers, very minimal, it's just going to be a training, it's not going to be.
I'm not bringing an attorney to meet each person.
Okay, all right.
CCM, I forget which one of these, CCM, I think, has a video out there for one of these that looks like it would be sufficient.
Okay, that's all you have, thank you.
Thank you. Council Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just getting ready to say that, CCM does do the FOI training, and I believe the last training I took, I believe their attorney, I want to say from Pullman and Comley, is that right? Does additional training and discusses FOI and Robert's rules throughout the whole process. So there's a video they can do online, which doesn't cost us because we're already a member of CCM, so, and yes, I can agree with what Council Russ said, yes, training for everyone would get them on the right track. My thing is, to point out was, we're trying to do what's in the charter to make sure we all are on the same page. So, everything else, I am in agreement on doing this, it makes sense, so that we're all on the same board. And I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. I would agree, this goes down the same path as sexual harassment training is required by the state of Connecticut. It's not because we found some, something that happened in our community, it's just required by the state of Connecticut. They want people to have this training so that they are aware and can potentially curb behavior, so there are no problems in the future. And that is what I also think, having FOI as well as Robert's Rules of Order will curtail any kind of issues in the future, that if you are educated on it and you understand it, that you shouldn't have any problems in the future. It would save the town some issues, or potential issues, shall I say. It is in the charter that the council oversees boards and commissions, we have the responsibility over boards and commissions. We appoint them, we put them in there, and so this is, it does not specifically say in the charter that, I don't believe, it specifically says that boards and commissions have to use Robert's rules. I think it does say that you have to follow, you know, state guidelines and things of that, so that would cover FOI, but all in all, to give training and say you, to follow Robert's rules, I mean, how can that be bad? You know, I mean, I think it would only make some of our meetings that, and then also, when you have new people come in, you're giving them the training on how to conduct a meeting. So if they ever want to be the chair of that committee, how do they conduct that meeting? You're giving them a lot of tools here to, to do good things and make them so that they could be successful leaders on their boards or commissions, as well as teaching about FOI so that, you know, people don't come complaining that maybe they're discussing things that are off topic, or they're not sticking to the agenda, or, there's things that pop up, and maybe if you're not educated in it, it could go astray. So, and just remember, this does not apply to elected, elected people where it says, you may be considered grounds for removal because we're elected, you can't remove elected officials, that's a different situation. These are for the ABCs, people that have been appointed that are, we have put into place. So I am in favor of it, I only see it doing good for our community and making us a better community at that. Council McBride?
Thank you. I, I agree with what everybody's saying, but I'm having a hard time with just being newly appointed, so I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion to say, to recommend a resolution requiring all current, add the words "all current," prior to newly appointed and reappointed members of the town agencies, committees, councils, receive training in Robert's Rules of Order and the Connecticut Freedom of Information Act, and then remove prior to being sworn in by the town clerk for new appointees and reappointees that had not previously received for training prior to the start of the new term.
No, I think it's really important the new person don't get sworn, I think you have to keep something in there about swearing in, because you got to make sure they do that before this training first. You could include everyone else, but don't force someone in until they have it, that's just so much easier to capture them that way.
Okay, so I'll restrict, I'll.
All right, you, you started reading before, while I was writing the word amended.
I guess the only, the only change would be, the amendment would be to add the words after, to recommend a resolution requiring, add the words "all current" and, so it's just adding those three words, and then everything else will stay the same.
Question?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Parker?
There would be a period after the word "act."
Oh, are you still amending?
Well, I, well, I had to change it to.
To recommend a resolution requiring all current and newly appointed.
And everything else stays the same.
And reappointed members of the town agencies, prior to being sworn in.
General current, comma.
Mm-hmm.
And then at, after Connecticut's Freedom of Information Act would be a period, and then we, I'd have to insert newly appointed and reappointed members.
Newly and reappointed.
Wait, what?
What?
I would need to re-add that to make that sentence flow the way.
Yeah.
Town manager Burt is saying, he wants to keep that in there. So after the Connecticut's Freedom of Information Act, period, then insert newly appointed and reappointed.
Members?
Members, prior to being sworn in, that would continue on.
Hey, just to make this more complicated, the reappointed actually don't get sworn in again, but they do have to go through committee, so we're flagging them before they get, you know, reappointed, but it's not necessarily, the swearing in only applies to new people.
Okay, point of information?
Yeah, but this is all going to be for you and the town clerk to hash out.
Yeah, yeah.
So if it has in there "all current and newly appointed and reappointed."
Right.
That covers everybody, basically, right?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
And then you will have a list, as the town clerk does, of all the appointed people, and you guys can sort this through in-house, right? We don't have to micromanage that part.
If you stop at the period after Freedom of Information Act and then just strike everything down to authorize, we could just establish we're going to do it before swearing in for the new people.
To recommend a resolution requiring all current and newly appointed and reappointed members of town agencies, committees, and councils, ABCs, receive training in Robert's Rules of Order and Connecticut Freedom of Information Act, period. And then you're suggesting, strike.
Everything and start up at "to authorize" the town manager.
The next sentence.
Yeah, the clerk that I just said it, that you're going to do it before swearing in.
You can pick whenever that you want them to do it. What do you, Council McBride?
I'm sorry?
Are you good with striking that whole sentence?
Yes, yeah, my intent was just to have, include all.
All right, so basically you're saying, let me read it so that we get it.
Thank you.
The motion, amended motion, McBride?
Can I make a point of information before you do that? For doing all current and newly appointed, do we need to say reappointed?
It's already right there.
What I'm saying is, if we're saying all current, do we have to say reappointed? That seems redundant.
Unless you want refresher training as they come up every few years.
Do we want them to do it every time they get reappointed?
Well, some people are on a committee for five years, and then they get reappointed. Do you want them to have a refresher? Maybe.
That was my question.
Maybe.
Okay.
Point of information?
Your question?
To you, to you, to him. Oh, actually, both of you. Let me rephrase that. Could, could he make that decision? Could the town clerk and Mr. Burt make that decision? We don't have to do that. We don't even have to add it in the resolution. So it's not even up to us. They can go back and review and refresh and leave it in his hands.
If he strikes the "and reappointed."
We're just saying they're required to do it, and how it gets done is on, for them to decide in-house. How it gets done and how they select it.
And you could strike the "and reappointed." We could still do that under the other part, decide part of that program is when you come up, if it makes sense. That does give us more flexibility and see how.
So you would like to also scratch "and reappointed"?
Yeah.
Newly appointed and scratch "and reappointed."
Right. It's "all current and newly appointed."
All right. Let's read this. Ready? "To recommend a resolution requiring 'all current and newly appointed members of the town agencies, committees, and councils, ABCs, receive training in Robert's rules of order and the Connecticut Freedom of Information Act," period. Skip the sentence and take it back up to, "to authorize the town manager in consultation with the town clerk to establish the training program. Chairs of the town clerk, town, I'm sorry, chairs of the town ABCs will be required to follow Robert's rules of order when conducting meetings. Additionally, failure of ABC members to follow Robert's rules of order or the Freedom of Information Act may be considered grounds for removal from ABCs." Your point of information?
Would it be possible? Can we add in line to say "per the charter"? Because it's in the charter. That way, they know where it's coming from.
"May be considered grounds for removal from ABCs per charter section." Is that what you're asking for? No, that's just a wording.
Just a wording.
That's not, there's not changing. I haven't even gotten back to Council McBride.
It's still his turn.
Hold on one second. So you want to say "per charter section, section eight? Eight? Point one, point one?
Five, five, eight point one, point five.
Eight point one, point five. Okay. Council McBride?
Yes.
This is how we have totally rearranged your amended motion.
I just need to close that much harm. A point of information?
Your question.
I just, and I should note this, but I don't know this. When someone, so personnel appointments moves, just a reappointment forward, then they come to the council and we pass them, do they get sworn in?
No.
After that?
Not, if they're not new. Reappointments, no.
So, so, but if somebody, but the, but the motion of us approving them at a council is what makes them now a reappointed member, correct?
Correct, correct.
So are we, where in that process are we going to do the training?
That says "all current and."
We'll figure it out.
Newly appointed. All current covers them.
Say, there's a gap between, you could say.
Between, it could be, yeah.
Because that's usually, we give instructions to say, okay, you've been appointed by us, then you're going to move to the council. There's a gap.
And also say you're appointed following completion.
Completion of the training. Okay. I'm not saying to put it in here. I'm just trying to.
We'll figure it out.
Remember the, I just didn't know if they got sworn in or not. I just, us approving them, was it, that was there?
No. They get sworn in after we. Only new members get sworn in after we appoint them.
And reappointments don't.
And the reappointments are considered current members. So they can, you can call them up anytime and say, we need you to do training because you haven't done it in this past, you have never done it. We need you to do the training.
So does a new, does a brand?
Even before they get appointed, even before, there's expires.
Does a brand new appointment?
Point of order.
Your point of order?
Council Jones's point of information is.
You are right. You are absolutely right. Council Jones, you are out of order.
I'm just trying to get the process straight.
All right, you're out, you're, all right, you don't have the floor now. Council McBride? We have completely changed your amended motion.
I just wanted to include all. That's all.
As read by me. Are you good with that?
Yes, I am.
Council Parker, as the second, are you good with that?
Yes.
Now we have another motion on the floor. Does, are there any questions, or are we good to vote on this? Not seeing any hands, we're going to take a vote. On the motion to recommend a resolution requiring "all current and newly appointed members of town agencies, committees, and council, ABCs, receive training in Robert's rules of order and the Connecticut Freedom of Information Act. To authorize the town manager in consultation with the town clerk to establish the training program, chairs of the town ABCs will be required to follow Robert's rules of order when conducting meetings. Additionally, failure of ABC members to follow Robert's rules of order or the Freedom of Information Act may be considered grounds for removal of the ABC per Charter Section 8.1.5." Moved by, amended was moved by McBride, seconded by Parker. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes six to one to one. Now we're voting on it as a whole?
Six to one to zero?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. All right. Thank you for correcting me. Now we're passing it as a whole.